All right, good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, January 16, 2025 at 6:05 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV, and it's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, a sound broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing, so welcome and thank you for joining us. And thank you to trustee Emmy for also joining us tonight on the dais. So for our first item tonight, this is a big night, y'all. We will recognize our outgoing trustee, trustee Nolita Lugo, whose position was filled by a newcomer during the 2024 runoff election. So we will recognize the trustee for at-large position eight, Nolita Lugo. I will start by asking trustee Lugo if she would like to say anything before turning it over to our superintendent and then opening it up to all trustees. Trustee Lugo.
Oh, my goodness. I do, so thank y'all for this opportunity to share a few final words. Sitting with me is my daughter Emiliana Emmy, and she was two and a half when I started to really dive into, actually, two, when I started to dive into more local public education issues. And she sat on my lap while I was making campaign calls, and here she is now in first grade. So it's been a long, long road. So true to form, if you know me, over these last four years, you know that my final statements, it's actually going to be made in the form of a poem. So just running with the same theme. All right. These last four years, a long and winding road, like a lifetime in the rearview. Think back, way back. A global pandemic, a newly minted superintendent, COVID controversy, crisis, remote learners, essential workers, masks, filters, acrylic barriers, generation zoomer, countless losses, but some surprising gains. The undeniable need for mental health, human connection, all the what-nows and what-ifs, a return to a new normal re-acclamation, the great resignation. And so many questions. What about SPED, DL, ALC disparities? Are we seeing all the data? Are we getting to the root? Are we creating multipliers from exemplars? How are all the voices being lifted up and heard? What else isn't being said? Our questions were counted. Ask too much, that's a distraction and a disturbance. Ask too little, that's staying in your lane. One gold star for you. Invited to Saturday morning governance training. Your behavior, they say, must change. In the midst a long-range plan, bringing together operations, transformation, and community voice, tireless collaboration, a leap of faith, a historic $2 billion bond, and, dare I say, a glow-up of the dais. Educators taking their seat like a teacher-to-trustee pipeline. Over the moon, my hopes soared. Big things were in store. Ain't that an understatement? Soon came Priority 1A. If ever there was a reason to understand Nietzsche, this was it. There was the good, the bad, the all of it. We were on interim number two. We heard loud and clear, "Look in your own backyard." Unconventional choice, for sure. Not a trained educator, but a master at operations. Want a strong system, reliable processes, and thoughtful implementation? This one's a keeper. These last four years, change has been the constant. Sometimes rolling like molasses, messy and barely satisfying. Sometimes like a wrecking ball, furious and unflinching. One isn't necessarily better than the other, it's how we navigate it. But that's just it, isn't it? With each new and shifting crisis, there's a temptation, partly fact, partly fear. Will this be the straw that breaks it all? Maybe let's do the hardest things later. We just need to get through right now. Thing is, kids can't wait. In classrooms and schoolyards across our district, young minds, young people, each one inherently worthy of reaching their personal potential, regardless of ZIP code, 504, IEP, immigration status, or whether their mama knows me. We owe them equality, education, even as the state lives in its own manufactured reality. But I take heart. I see in this board steadfast, principled, passionate, strategic, data-informed, family-focused, community-based, determined servant leaders, each and every one. To this new team of 10, stay focused on the mission, rooted in shared values, courageously standing up when it'll be easier to lay low. Operationalizing transformation is the long and winding road. Being laid, step by purposeful step, serving with you has been an honor.
Superintendent, would you like to share a few words?
I would, I would. I don't have a poem. I'm not very creative. But I think it's important that our community and staff know just how impactful trustee Lugo's work has been to this organization over the last many years. And before she was a trustee, before she was giving me counsel late at night, before she was pushing all of us to be a better version of ourself, she was a mom, and she is someone who deeply, deeply cared about the students in Austin ISD. And she's one of the people that I'm in awe of when you think about the grace given to someone that they may not really know or understand, or, in our case, in the wayway beginning, care for. Our history is complicated in the beginning, but she's come to become, to me, a sincere, kind of like a sounding board, light shoulder to kind of lean on when things are difficult. And I'm a better superintendent because of our conversations and the work that you've pushed us to really consider and focus on. I think that your work is going to mean that countless students, more than you'll ever know, and countless staff, more than you'll ever know, will be impacted in an incredibly positive way. And I thank you for it. You're an amazing human. You're just incredible. And thank you for giving me the grace and allowing me to maybe show a different side. Not many people would have done that, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Vice President Foster, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'll just, you know what, I'll just say this. There is, aside from all the realities around just the joy and the blessing that it's been to serve with you as, you know, one of these nine, and the journey of several of us running together and watching your fierce run, like, you know, that was not a fait accompli, that was not written in the stars that Nolita Lugo would be an at-large trustee for this city of however many hundred thousand people. And you willed it to happen. I mean, it was, trustee Boswell was right there. It was incredible to watch you work. And no give up, no give up. So that was just the starting point. And there's a whole lot to talk about, but there's one thing that's really interesting that's probably going to live with me forever. And Lakisha Drinks had a beautiful way of talking about it when we just ran into each other. She said, you know, when folks are in it for the right reason, even if they're oil and water, somehow they come together. And folks should know, like, it should go down in history. Folks should know that when Nolita Lugo talked about Matias Segura five years ago, there were words that cannot be said on the dais. There was anger, there was upset. I'm sorry, brother. I'm sorry, Superintendent. But it was real. And this person to my left, y'all's right, Superintendent Segura, is someone that I really respect and admire. Trustee Lugo is someone I really respect and admire. And I was probably one of 100 matchmakers in the community, saying, can we all get along? And he wasn't the superintendent then, but we went down the hill, we drank lemonade, and we talked, and I said, brother, you got to get together with trustee Lugo, like, you all got to work this out. He said, I don't know. I just don't know. He said, some wounds, some wounds are too deep. I said, you are dramatic. But then I said, okay, you know what, let me work the other angle. Let me talk to trustee Lugo. She said, hell, she said, no, no, that's not going to happen, that's not going to work. And these folk were in pain in different ways. These folk were beautiful, loving people who had worked so hard and had fallen on different sides of something in a moment. And it was kind of like a mistake, like, it's not our hearts, it's not, it's what the world had positioned us into being that had us not see each other on the same side of things. So to see this moment, actually, no, to see the moment when we hired Superintendent Segura and to see Noli lead the charge and saying, this is the right guy. I said, wow, this is a person who is not about her. It's about what's right, it's about what's good, it's about what serves us all. That was huge, the way your heart did that, you know, that Grinch thing, a group, however many sizes or whatever, like, your heart just accepted possibility in a way that has transformed this district and has a lot to do with why we have the superintendent that we have. So I walk away with a life lesson about possibility, and I don't know if people have noticed, we live in a moment where there's a lot of sense of divide. And you, I'm not sugarcoating it, y'all were apart. And just seeing y'all's journey together as partners, as partners, as part of this team of 10, is honestly a life inspiration to me. So thank you, trustee Lugo, for everything you are, for everything you've been, for your family, for the way you've given, and what you've shown us is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other trustees like to say a few words? Trustee Kaufman.
Nolita. So I do have a poem. Marigolds are orange, and so is your hair. It won't be next week, but you always still care. Your care and your compassion and your dedication to the students in this district has been inspirational. And I just, I have had my own journey of watching you from that, I mean, watching you fighting the fight for our schools and making sure our kids are in, you know, that we're respecting and maintaining our communities. Then I saw you when you were on this board and when I was working in the district, and your ear was always there, your compassion and your care for people. Working in the district in difficult times was real, and I appreciate the support you had then. And then to have this opportunity the last two years to serve on this dais with you and to serve on the audit committee with you has just been tremendous to get to know you personally and to see you in action in front of everyone and behind closed doors, and it's remarkable. So I look forward to hearing you at Public Comment when you come to yell at us about what we're doing. And I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Secretary Boswell.
Thank you. I feel like after the race we ran together in 2020, we are bonded together forever in a unique way, that we had to do it twice. We did it during COVID. You and Emmy were two of the only humans I saw outside my house, and I spent a lot of time with you, and there was a lot of joy in that. And you got here in a way that is so deeply rooted in community. You served here, start to finish, in a way that was just as deeply as rooted in community, including what people have talked about, the decision to make Matias our superintendent. You were back listening to our community to get there and thinking about our community to get there, start to finish, and I know you're going to go off and continue to do that. And I have enjoyed laughing with you and learning from you, and you make me think and you make me feel, and I love you and I'm going to miss you.
Anyone else? Trustee Whitely Chu.
So yeah, I definitely want to say that you are such an inspiration for me and a reason I even thought remotely I can do this. You came out and ran for trustee. You didn't, and this, I think, is a great example for all the kids in our district. People aren't going to make room for you. You just have to do it anyway. They're not going to make room for you being a parent of young children, being an elected official, but you did it, and it showed me that I could do it. And I really admire you as a parent. You're a mentor parent to me. We have little wonderful first graders who are the same age, or big, big now. And then you're also an experienced parent of wonderful young men who even could say, I'm proud of you. I was thinking, like, someday they're going to be so proud that she's doing this, but to be even that matured, to see that, to see how big, they'll really, really understand someday how big what you did was. And when you do something where you are caring for all children in this role, that is really being the ultimate parent to your kids. So you're taking care of your kids and making sure the world is a better place for all children and to our future, and that's the kind of mother I want to be, and I'm so glad and proud I got to sit beside you up here. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees?
All right, I'll just say, trustee Lugo, you have just been a wonderful friend and, you know, Superintendent Segura, so that you've made him a better superintendent, you made me a better trustee when you were out in the community. I just, I learned so much from you. I didn't know, really. I thought I knew about community and how to center them in our decisions, but you really showed me how that works. And you're such a testament to, you don't have to go through a certain pathway to make it up here onto the dais. You did it, you know, you didn't necessarily have the social capital or the money to do this, but through your sheer willpower and determination and the way you inspired people around you, you made it, and your legacy is huge. You really shifted. If I could point to just like one person who really kind of, for me personally, shifted, like, how we think about equity and creating opportunities for our students and valuing them as experts in their own lives and finding ways to lift that up, it's you. And so thank you for that lesson, and thank you to your kids. We love hearing about you, and your mom is fantastic, and we're all so proud of you, trustee Lugo. Thank you. All right, so now we will move on to the swearing-in of our new trustee. So during the swearing-in, only invited family members and friends may join those being sworn in, and we are just so excited about to welcome Fernando Lucas de Urioste, newly-elected trustee for at-large position eight. Let's give him a hand. And he's already got his vest and everything. He will be ceremonially sworn in by Rachel Stone, community advocate, Fernando's wife, and an inspiration to trustee de Urioste. So we will, you can go ahead and proceed when you're ready.
So you can repeat after me. I, Fernando Lucas de Urioste, do solemnly swear.
I, Fernando Lucas de Urioste, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of the trustee at-large position eight.
Of the office of the trustee at-large position eight.
Of the Austin Independent School District.
Of the Austin Independent School District.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yes, you may have a seat at the dais, and then if you'd like to say a few words, you may. Nothing like being sworn in and then immediately being put on the spot to give a speech, and that's just what it's like up here. Please, proceed.
You know, I just want to express my gratitude. Yeah, I just want to start expressing my gratitude. I appreciate all of the community that supported me. I appreciate all the board members and electeds and everybody that was helping me along the way, and, you know, the sense of responsibility, taking this seat is not going unnoticed. I do want to acknowledge the, you know, great trust that everybody's put in me. I want to thank all the mentors and teachers that I've had. I've been very fortunate to have good tutelage along the way. I want to thank all the students that I've had in my career teaching that I've learned more than I could have imagined from. I want to thank the families that I've also learned a lot from advocating for over the past years, and that really taught me the deep value of, you know, participation in the education system of the entire community. And certainly not least, I do want to acknowledge my wife, Rachel, that in every sense of the phrase, I would not be here if it was not for you. So I appreciate your support and the fun that we have learning together. So thank you.
Thank you, welcome. All right, so I guess we really get started now with our board meeting. So next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board, and tonight we have two speakers who left recorded messages and no caller signed up to speak in person. So we will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so please listen carefully.
This is David Smith, the CEO for United Way for Greater Austin. I'm calling on behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, and most importantly, the thousands of families we serve here in our community, just to express our deepest thanks to the AISD Board of Trustees and to District Superintendent Segura and the entire AISD team for your support. All of us at United Way are so honored to call peace our future home and are excited about the future as we look forward to the day when the refurbished building is bustling with our youngest children receiving high-quality early childhood education, allowing their parents to go to work and setting them up for success in the future. Thank you for envisioning with us a community where every family has access to the high-quality childcare and for seeing peace as a beacon for what is possible when we come together. We look forward to ongoing partnership with you, and many, many thanks again.
Hi, my name is Mindra Anderson, and I'm a teacher librarian in Austin ISD. I'm calling to congratulate Fernando on his new position and welcome him to the board. Throughout his campaign, he was in communication with me and other librarians about how we can work together to support our families, which I really appreciate. He shared that as a parent advocate, he would like to further the work to improve connections between families and campus staff. So we talked about how librarians are in constant communication with their campus community, sharing updates and family newsletters, asking for book recommendations, and working with families to ensure our libraries will best serve our students. We are here as a resource for families in their child's reading journey. So again, I'm excited to welcome Fernando as a strong library supporter and look forward to learning more.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our public comments. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Okay, great. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisdboard. Next up is the president's report. Next Monday, the district will observe Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and district offices and schools will be closed. We encourage the community to use this day to make a positive impact. Many Austin ISD students will also be part of the community march and festival to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy on Monday at 9:30 AM, followed by a festival at Houston Tiltson University. We encourage our community to come out for this great event. The MLK Oratory Competition is also being held right now at ACC Highland Campus, and we wish all the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade AISD students the best of luck tonight while they share their speeches on the topic, "The Time Is Now: Protecting Our Freedom and Justice by Unifying Our Voices Through Democracy." Superintendent Segura, we hope you'll provide us an update, the winners, and a future superintendent update. The city and district recognize also that the area may experience inclement weather next week, so be sure to check any district communications and city communications for any changes for the event and for notices for the next week. Also, as part of the agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that the board shall, at the first board-authorized meeting each month, publicly report by reading into the record, A, the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month period, and B, the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. So the November, I'm sorry, the October, November, and December three-month average board meeting time spent on lone-star governance to find student outcomes and special education monitoring was 54.53%. So we have exceeded our target of 50%. Good job, guys. For the last month, December 2024, we were at 41%, and the board spent 196 minutes in executive session in December. So next up is our discussion on student achievement. We are focusing on Scorecard Goal 3, which is the College Career Military Readiness Goal Progress Monitoring of College Credit. And as part of our commitment to focus on student outcomes, this time does count towards our TEA required minutes, and we have estimated 16 minutes for our conversation, although we do not have a time limit. Before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does any trustee have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay, cool. Well, since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Seeng and Board of Trustees. We'll be pulling up the monitoring report. The team and I will present on the Scorecard Goal 3, CCMR Goal Progress Measure 3.2 College Credit. I have joining me tonight Dr. Angel Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, Ashley Binnaker, Executive Director of Secondary Outcomes, and Dr. Elizabeth Severance, Director of Advanced Academics. And so we'll be pulling that presentation, that monitoring report up here shortly. See if they get it up there.
See if they get it up there. All right, I think we'll have it here in just a moment. All right. Well, before we get going, I want to acknowledge a change in format and structure to the monitoring reports. This has been an ongoing conversation with the administration and the Board of Trustees. And one of the things that we're endeavoring to do as an organization is to clearly communicate the work that we are doing to support the different goals and constraint progress measures. But do it in a way that really allows us to dive deeper, we need to dive deep, and also tell a story. This is an evolution. I would say over the next couple of months, we'll take input from our trustees, input from the community, and make refinements. But the goal here really is to be hyper-transparent, create connection between the work and the overall initiatives, and ultimately just improve and get feedback as we move along the process. And so with that, I'll introduce the Goal Progress Measure 3.2. And again, this is to support Goal Three, College Career and Military Readiness. And the percent of annual graduates who demonstrate CCMR by meeting TSI criteria in at least one of the following items: earning an associate's degree concurrent with graduation, enrolling at a post-secondary institution following graduation, earning an industry-based certification, or earning a Level One or Level Two certificate will increase from 43.7% for the class of 2022 to 54.6% in class of 2027. And based on the Scorecard, which is approved in June 20th of 2024, the Goal Progress Measure 3.2, which we're presenting today, that if completed with fidelity, should ultimately predict movement on the outcome. And so the Goal Progress Measure reads as, "The percent of 11th and 12th grade students who are eligible for college credit, passing a dual credit on ramps, three through five on the AP exam, and/or four through seven on the IB exam will increase from 48.2% in June 2024 to 53.8% by June 2029." And so as you move a little further down the monitoring report, one of the things we always want to do is to communicate to our board and our community how the work is supported and tied to overall initiatives. These initiatives are in draft form. We are working with staff, principals, and we're presenting them to the board. But I think it's important to just show how we expect them to connect. And for the initiatives, we would expect this Goal Progress Measure to be largely represented in our middle schools initiative, which is focusing on middle school, and our post-secondary success initiative. And so the goal always is to be able to show that connection before we get too deep into any particular board monitoring report. And as we move forward into the monitoring report, we will start with the executive summary. Before I get going, I want to do, I want to communicate that this is a new goal. It is different than past goals and previous scorecards in that it combines multiple factors. And it is not just those students that are enrolled in classes, but it's those students that are eligible. So it's very, very different and I think something that aligns with our board values. And what I also want to communicate is that for each of these, eligible is kind of nuanced. We often talk about this, we were actually talking about this earlier today, in that passing a class doesn't necessarily make you eligible. There are some, in some cases, depending on the area, other things that have to be done, whether it's submitting the transcript or the grade to the university and then them having to accept it, or in some cases, you know, passing a test and not necessarily passing the class. So the team has been working and we've built out a data set, but that data set does not extend back multiple years. So we are limited in kind of going back and making comparisons to pre-pandemic levels or even, you know, post-pandemic 2021, 2022. We have this year's information and we have last year's information, but that information and that data is somewhat, it's not as clean as we'd like it to be. And so as we move forward, we have the systems in place to be able to track what we need to be responsive to the Scorecard Goal Progress Measure. And so as we move through the information, I think it's important to talk about some key findings. And as we progress through Goal Progress Measure 3.2, we continue to look at the following data points: prior credit in college credit-bearing courses and the current enrollment in college credit-bearing courses. And again, focusing on 11th and 12th grade students. Some of the outliers that we'll talk about later in the report include Crockett and Navarro Early College High School, who have between 62% and 64% of students currently enrolled in a college credit-bearing course. And so the reason this is important is because the more students you have in the course, the higher percent of students you would expect to be successful and ultimately be eligible to meet the goal that we're describing here. Current progress includes a variety of different things. Over the last year, we have made adjustments within the structure within Austin ISD to combine CTE, CCMR, advanced academics, as well as the academic function within counseling to ensure that we're aligned in providing resources to our principals and our campuses. And we're beginning to see some of that kind of in the data, some of that success as well. It's important to note that there still are multiple challenges and barriers that we're having to address as we move through these, the initiative and support the work. One of the ones that's most notable is the lack of teachers that are certified to teach these courses. It ends up, in many cases, being one of the challenges to provide the offering at the campus. One of the other things that we have identified that is a positive is that the universal course sheet has created the opportunity for lots of students to pursue the coursework and that has ultimately helped move the number in a positive direction, we believe. And one of the last things that I think is a direct connection to the work that the board has supported is the ability to actually track the data in real time. If recall, about a year and a half ago, the board made an investment to acquire a platform that helped us track in real time. Prior to that, we were having to kind of work off spreadsheets, look back multiple months, kind of bring data together and make an informed decision. Now we have real-time data that we can sit down with our principals and work through to help ensure that our students have the options and are informed to make the decision they need to be successful. So all of those things have helped inform the progress that we believe we've made. There's still a lot of work to do, but we do believe that we are moving in the right direction. We have not yet established on-track and off-track parameters for many of our Scorecard Goals and that's part of the work that'll be coming in the spring. But we do believe that we are making progress and so I think it's worth noting. And so with that, I'd like to hand it over to Ashley Binnaker to take us through the data portion of the monitoring report.
All right, good evenings, trustee Superintendent Segura. It is a privilege to be here and to kick off our reporting on GPM 3.2. So as Superintendent Segura said, 3.2 aims to increase our number of 11th and 12th graders who are taking and earning college credit and are eligible for that from 48.2% last year, moving that all the way up to 53.8% by 2029. Austin ISD students can earn or can be eligible for college credit in a multitude of ways. One of those is your traditional dual credit, which they take through ACC. They might do that in their regular school day, in an evening, or even in a summer course. Another way is through OnRamps, Advanced AP, yes, there we go, AP exams and international baccalaureate exams. And before we break down the data, I want to get into the table that we have presented here. So we broke this down into three major groups. So you see your past data, our current data, which is fall '24, '25, and then also our future yearly targets. The prior data is going to show you from 2021 all the way up to '23, '24. This number is the percentage of students, percentage of 11th and 12th graders who completed the year eligible for college credit. So we can see here that in '23, '24, when we ended that year, 11th and 12th graders finished at 48.2%. On the right side of the table, you're going to see our yearly targets, which starts with this year, of course, we're aiming for 49.3. This is also going to be that total percentage of 11th and 12th graders. And we want to, each of these annual targets was set originally based on previous completion rates. Again, both of these categories, both past and future, the yearly targets are total 11th and 12th graders reaching that goal. Also, as Superintendent Segura said, in recognizing that this is our first time to present this goal and as we're learning it ourselves, we are trying to be very transparent in the way that we communicate the data to you. So that's why this middle section here, the part in the bold box, is a little bit different data than what you see on the left and the right. So to break that down, the first column, 11th and 12th, all enrolled, that represents all of our 11th and 12th graders enrolled throughout the district. So whether they're in a college credit eligible course or not, that's the number of our 11th and 12th graders. The second column, '24, '25 prior CC credit, that's going to be the number of our 11th and 12th graders who began this school year already having met this goal because they've already earned college credit in some way. Our third here, I do want to go back real quick. That second column, that percentage represents unduplicated students also. It means that a single student, Dr. Severance is a student, a senior in high school, she could have already earned college credit in a multitude of ways, but she's only going to count one time in that percentage. The third column, you can see that 64% of our 11th and 12th graders are actively enrolled in a college credit course. This percentage also represents unduplicated students, though it is possible that we have a student represented in the second and the third column. So if Dr. Severance is a senior and she earned college credit prior to this year, she would count in the second column. And if she's still enrolled in another college credit class, she would be represented in column three as well. I'd also like to note that while it shows that we're currently at 39% starting this year out, because of where we are in the school year, we've just started second semester, it's possible that we're actually higher than 39% because of fall dual credit courses. However, by the nature of reporting, we don't have that data yet from ACC. So while we would hope that we're a little higher than that, we just can't provide the data at this time. Also, on that same note, I would say that just be aware that any of the other completion data, it comes at the end of the school year, so OnRamps, Spring Dual Credit, AP and IB, all of those complete in May. And so it could be reported as late as August. All right, so now that we understand the table and the information that's provided there, let's break down some of the key takeaways that we see. I think that one of the most obvious and evident that we see there is that 39% of our 11th and 12th graders have already met the goal, which is a great starting point for us this year. Also, just as you have to play the lottery to win the lottery, as Superintendent Segura said, we have more students enrolled in these courses, which means that we have a greater chance of meeting these goals. Enrollment in college credit courses is trending upwards in all of our student groups and so we're really excited about the collective efforts that that is showing a positive effect with our students. 64% of our 11th and 12th graders are enrolled in a course, which is 14.7 percentage points above our yearly target for this year. While we do have limited data for the past years, we know preliminary data is showing us that last year, in '23, '24, that 62% of 11th and 12th graders were enrolled in these courses and this year we're seeing 64%. So that's a two-point percentage increase. Again, all exciting things, all show growth. And again, we think that a large part of that is the course, the universal course selection sheets, making sure that our students know what their opportunities are and really pushing for those advanced opportunities. As we continue to break down the data further, we see that our students that are identified as Black African-American, emergent bilingual, or special education have the lowest college credit completion percentages in '24, '25. But I do want to take a minute to recognize and celebrate because those student groups this year, in comparison to last year, have an increase. So our students who are identified as Black African-American have showed an increase in enrollment for college credit courses of 15.1%, emergent bilingual at 20.3%, and students receiving special educations have had an increase of 13.2% just since last year. So that's really exciting. Our final takeaway this evening is that we recognize that our students in special education can face some challenges in these courses. And while 6.7% of them have already received or have earned the college credit and 21.5% of them are enrolled, that is an increase, but it also shows that we have a greater need to support those students. So ways that we can do that is tailored instruction and meeting their accommodations for success. And we really think that the great work that's been going on with special education across the district, as well as MTSS, the realignment and post-secondary outcomes, has all been there to support that work. And so we're really excited and we feel more equipped moving forward into the next school years to be successful here. And Dr. Severance is going to walk us through our root causes.
Thank you. So if we, as we review our key takeaways and sort of dive into why we think some of this is happening, one of the things, as Matias Superintendent Segura mentioned, that this is a different goal and that's focused on completion. So one of the things with the choice sheet is we've noticed that more students are taking the courses, but now we're also looking at the root cause of making sure students are successful and have college readiness to be successful in the course. So one way this shows up is the percentage of students who are not TSI-complete yet. So although you don't need to be TSI-complete to take a dual credit course, it just demonstrates that there's some academic foundations pieces that we still need to address. One way that we're addressing that is sort of TSI support systems and collaborating across academics, and again, also with secondary academic counseling. As we think about the other, another area of opportunity is related to instructor training. And we say instructor training because this is a variation across these different college credit opportunities. So advanced placement, the professor or the teacher of the course is the high school teacher. In OnRamps, they have a high school teacher and they also have a professor from UT. With ACC Dual Credit, they have a dual credit professor from ACC who may be an adjunct from ACC or may be a high school teacher. And so there's variation in what teacher requirements or credentials are needed, as well as variations in training opportunities. And so we're really working on how we leverage Java-like professional learning times and strengthening partnerships with ACC to better support dual credit instructors coming into the high school that may not be typically working with high school students. And then as we keep going. The other piece that we have looked at is the standardized course sequence and how we're really trying to make sure that students and families understand the pathway that they can take to lead to ultimately college credit courses or even advanced pathways. And that without clearer tracking for student-facing opportunities for families to track what courses they're needing to take, we're reviewing sort of four-year and seven-year planning opportunities so that that information is more readily accessible and understandable for families as well. And then as Ashley was talking about, the students receiving special education and emergent bilingual students, we also know that as those are the two groups that are performing the lowest in this area, that we really need to work on our language and learning barriers and how we're addressing that. So one of the pieces that has been helpful this year is that part of the way to involve special education has been the campus CCMR advisory team meeting, so bringing in special education department chairs to make sure that they're part of those conversations and how we're supporting students. In addition, collaborating also with E3 Alliance with their Emergent Bilingual Steering Committee, the multilingual team has sort of brought that work together under the NAEP Equity Work and it's action research that's brought together early college programs, advanced academics, multilingual CTE, and really trying to dive into the data for our emergent bilingual students and what systems or structures we can change to address those. And then as we move into the outliers, I feel like I won the lottery in getting to talk about our outliers. So I want to highlight first Crockett Early College High School. They do have the highest enrollment in college credit courses, but they also, in Appendix One is where you can see the campus-level data. Crockett also has less variation and disparity between student groups. And so they're really doing a great job of not just making sure, that makes sure all students are having access to these opportunities. And when you work with Crockett, it's very evident that AVID is part of their work and that part of their why. So even if you ask them, they will also say that they are pursuing national AVID demonstration status and that has really helped ground their work. It's the how behind their what. So it aligns their instructional strategies, the leadership systems, the site team, and really leveraging AVID to ensure students are having rigorous opportunities, but with academic support as well. Another key aspect for Crockett is their location right next to ACC. So it does also help build that partnership and relationship for students. The other piece, Crockett is a dual-language campus, which has also helped them in better serving their emergent bilingual students. That kind of transitions me to the next campus, Navarro Early College High School, which is also a dual-language campus and has one of the highest percentage of emergent bilingual students and students new to the country. And so they really leverage their dual-language programming. They have one of the highest numbers of students in AP Spanish and that is one of the ways that they are really ensuring that students are and that is one of the ways that they are really ensuring that students are getting college credit. They have also really worked hard to help secure and support their teachers in becoming dual-credit teachers, so that it's their high school teacher who's also eligible to teach dual credit. Just gives them more understanding of how to work with high school students. They also really focus on monitoring and working together. So they use their Title I funds and CCMR fund and project specialists to help support ninth and 10th graders, to help keep them on track and eligible for dual-credit courses, as well as using the CCMR funds, bless you, to better support some of the advanced academics and access in those areas. And then last but not least, Northeast has also done a stellar job in really increasing access and outreach. One of the things they really do work hard, again, to ensure access to those ECHS courses. They've also really strategically used Onramps to increase dual-credit college credit opportunities. They also, last year, expanded AP through offering AP pre-cow. And they have a regular ECHS team that meets together from the librarian, the project specialist, the CCMR admin, who meet regularly to review and make sure students are on track or how they need to work to complete their TSI criteria so that they can be eligible for more dual-credit opportunities. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back, or I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wilson to talk about strategies, current progress, and plan forward.
Good evening. As everyone has suggested, we're really excited about this goal and the progress being made because there is clear evidence to suggest that we're moving in the right direction as a system. And I think one of the truest signs and pieces of evidence is in what Dr. Severance just presented on, which is a lot of our, quite a few of our band-one schools were outliers. And that's exciting for us to see when we look at the schools, when we look at the type, and then when we see what the outliers are. Our goal as a district is to move in a direction to where our outliers are just our consistent current reality across campuses. And that is what we're going to talk about today, is the progress forward and the key initiatives that we are working towards in order to move into that direction. So as mentioned by Superintendent Segura, the beautiful thing about this goal is that we have redefined our advanced academics narrative to be all-encompassing of all of the goals in one, which really helps to streamline support and create alignment across the bands of campuses and then create alignment across executive directors, across departments, with us all working in tandem with the same shared language. So that is inclusive of dual credit with ACC, dual-credit enrollment with Onramps, and then also our AP and IB exams. So in this way, we're able to eliminate competing priorities and we're able to bring them all into one umbrella to work together seamlessly in service of students. We also want to give credit to our CCMR Goal Progress Measure workgroups, which included the UT Research Scholars, Opportunity Austin, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, community partners like APY and Campus Administration Counselors, College and Career Advisors, our executive leadership team, and also our teachers that committed countless hours and evenings to come together to give us feedback. We were able to take that feedback, synthesize it and process it in a way that makes it more comprehensive for us to be able to track and monitor the goals and the target. Again, as stated by Dr. Severance, Ms. Benneker, and Superintendent Segura, we are focusing on completion and not just enrollment. It makes the goal more rigorous, but it's actually able to service students in an equitable way as we look to ensure that they have a clear path forward, not just for high school graduation or attainment of a high school diploma, but to ensure that they are future-ready scholars and they're able to be productive citizens once they leave our doors in Austin ISD. So with our current progress and plan forward, we are focusing on three big items. Addressing disparities, refining support structures, and strengthening our partnerships. By addressing these key areas, we are ensuring students graduate equipped with the tools and confidence needed for success. One of the biggest changes for us was with the restructuring of our departments and creating a secondary outcomes team, our department. This also made room for us to create Executive Director of Secondary Outcomes, which previously, last school year and in previous school years, it was Executive Director of CCMR, CTE, and PTEC. So with secondary outcomes, we were able to bring academic counseling under the same team and wheelhouse and happy to have Ms. Benneker here presenting at her first board meeting. We told her it would be tons of fun, so she has been anticipating this all school year long. But we're excited to have Ms. Benneker aboard because we are already seeing the effects and the evidence in the system of what this looks like. Also, advanced academics working collaboratively with us and with principals. Principals have received increased face time through both of these departments and leaders and all the other departments that are represented by these two leaders. Through our level meetings, that's another change this school year as well. Last year, we had principals meeting once a month, and that was basically a whole group. This year, under the direction of Superintendent Segura, we have two meetings a month. One is for Principal Roundtable, which is basically informational items and lots of our district departments come and collaborate with principals. And then our level meetings, elementary and secondary, meet separately. And so we have an entire day dedicated to focusing just on our secondary outcomes, secondary initiatives, professional learning, walking the campus and doing peer collaborative work with MTSS walks and things of that nature. But they have proved to be very beneficial, and it also gives our secondary teams, like secondary outcomes, increased face time to be able to work with principals, academy directors, and school leaders on the initiatives and things that we're circling, because we know that whatever is monitored and gets measured. And so we see these increases in incremental ways because of the increased top time we have with principals to be able to help them to structure that. Also, with secondary outcomes and the alignment, there's an increased focus on academic counseling. What this means in the past for counselors, when they come together as a district, maybe for professional development or joint professional learning opportunities, there was a heavy focus on social-emotional learning, as it should be. And there was also a heavy focus on student well-being and professional learning opportunities to increase the supports in those areas. When we met, when I met with counselors at the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year for August Preservice Institute, they were very assured and encouraged that they would have support also in the academic counseling area. Many counselors identified that as a need, that they wanted for professional growth. And so we've restructured agendas, restructured our professional learning opportunities and sessions to ensure that we have this, because our counselors are the gateway for CCMR. When you think about outcomes bonus, when you think about our underserved student groups being underrepresented in AP, IB classes and pathways and things of that nature, our counselors are the gateway of that. Oftentimes, students walk through our doors and they don't have the self-efficacy or maybe even the self-confidence to say, "I think that I'm ready to be a part of this class." When you talk to a lot of our students that are representative of underserved groups, they are in the class because someone told them they could do it, whether that was a teacher, whether that was a counselor. Some educated professional in the building said, "I believe in you. I think you can do it," and they did it. And that mirrors any kind of research or case studies that you may be familiar with, taking two classes and telling one class that the GT class, and they really weren't, and they outperformed the GT class because it's all about mindset. So the more we can equip and inform and pour into our professionals that are academically advising and remove that barrier of predictability and look at it through an equitable lens, the more we will see increased representation of not just putting students in the class, but then persisting through, feeling confident, passing, and then going on to sign up for other classes because of the success rate they had in their first class of rigorous or advanced coursework. Aside from secondary outcomes, we've been focusing on progress monitoring for these campuses through the streamlined support with our CCMR dashboard. We've also been focused on, where we created a unified form, drop form for program changes. That's through our academic counseling department. Intentional support for special education. We included special education this year in our conversations that Ms. Benneker and Dr. Severance, their teams have on campuses for quarterly check-ins. Last year, the entire campus administration team was present. However, the special education chair may or may not have been present. This year, it is a requirement, and we have noticed more, like, I know Ms. Benneker mentioned an increased representation of students that are receiving special education services. This is because they're included now in the conversation, their case manager, the special education department chair. Last school year, Dr. Severance wasn't a part of those meetings as well. So everyone was just having these separate meetings. Principals are stretched thin, and when you pull them for one-off meetings and working in silos, we really don't have a unified vision and focus. So now we're all at the table together and we're able to make decisions that are best in support of students. We also have increased our efforts to be intentional about AP exam participation and Onramps college credit attainment. And you'll hear more about that as we get into the question and answer round. I want to move over to teacher support and instructional quality. Ms. Benneker touched a little bit on this with ensuring that we expand teacher support and increase professional learning opportunities for teachers. We talk about teacher support, a lot of times we talk about it in isolation, meaning focused on the realm of influence of what we can control, which is our Austin ISD teachers. But what we have found as an area of opportunity is that it's not just our Austin ISD teachers that need that focused support. It's also our instructors at the community college. Something that we have to remind ourselves over and over again is these are teenagers that are expected to be in high school and in college at the same time. And for a lot of us, we didn't have that expectation. So we are still dealing with issues like, not issues, areas of opportunity, excuse me, like executive functioning skills, study skills, learning how to balance the rigorous coursework, learning that, hey, there's a system and an expectation at ACC that may be different from at Aiken's Early College High School. So learning how to balance those varied, various competing priorities and expectations and being able to be successful in both areas, which is why we call it dual, because they're in two places or in two institutions at one time, and they have to show success in that. So what that means is that we have to increase professional support, and we are working collaboratively to have professional learning opportunities for our ACC instructors. And then also vice versa, we are working to get more of our Austin ISD teachers certified as instructors as well. We've noticed campuses like Navarro where there's an increased intentional focus on that. The students are more successful and persist through those courses. And then last but not least, enhancing family outreach and engagement by having comprehensive supports with campuses to, for families to better understand the opportunities and pathways that are available to students, for students to better understand it, and then for counselors to be able to be the conduit and the bridge between the school-to-home partnership in a way that effectively carries that message out for dual-credit AP, IB. We are also working to break down the myth that one is better than the other. Oftentimes, when you talk to parents, even in my own family, there's a perception, you know, maybe my child has to be in AP classes, all AP, because this will look better on the application for scholarships or for college admission. Or they, there's a preference for dual-credit opportunities because there's a perception this may look better. Both of them count towards weighted GPA, and we want to be able to break that barrier and myth and encourage students to persist in pathways that are best suited to their needs, their interests, and their future pathway and aspirations and opportunities. So this work has already begun with family and community engagement through our virtual academic, Advanced Academic Night, which was held in November. Also, our counseling department created a uniform presentation template this school year for all high school course options so that all students are receiving the same information across wherever campus that they are situated at. And then advanced academic opportunities to share with all eighth-grade students. So just even unifying the message that is going out to students at the middle school and the high school level. We've started that this year and we will continue that implementation, making adjustments and changes. And then also continuing the implementation of the universal choice sheet and being able to adjust as needed and pivot when we see that there is a better way to move in for student supports and needs. So lastly, we, as a district, were committed to preparing all students for life beyond high school through diverse and equitable college credit pathways. The work ahead requires a collective effort, which is what I heard, hope you heard communicated in our presentation, a collective effort that really prioritizes equity and opportunity for all students. And then we are happy to address any questions that you may have about our plans or progress.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I very much appreciate the presentation. And before we hand it over to questions, I want to maybe add a little bit of clarity around a couple things that were shared. One of the things that was talked about was band, band one. And I just want to make sure that our community and our families know, when we say band one, what we're referring to is a support and resource allocation index. And so over the last year, one of the things that we were trying to do is to create alignment when we talk about where schools need support. About a year and a half ago, you probably heard us talk about priority schools, and you probably heard us talk about data com schools, and you probably heard us talk about essential schools. And the challenge that we had is wherever you are in this organization, that meant something different to you, and we wanted to create clarity around that. So we worked with the, with Dr. Hawley, worked with Teaching, Learning, and Leading, and we created an index, and it is built using the demographic data that we have within the schools. And so it really is focused on the students themselves. And it also can create a weighting around the student group that needs the most support based on the information that we have. And so in that way, we can create bands. And the objective is, for us as an organization, we know that these schools in this band need additional support. And there is a shared understanding of where those schools are and what that support may look like. And so as I believe it was Ms. Benneker mentioned, you know, seeing the outlier schools being band one really communicates to us that the resources being applied to the schools that need the resources the most is showing outcomes in areas that we need those outcomes to be. So that's, I think, one area that I wanted to clarify. And then also, one change to the monitoring report is that we are now showing every school. So in previous monitoring reports, we would show summations, we would show kind of different data sets, but we didn't always show every school. And so if you look on Slide 10 and in the appendix, you'll see a breakdown of the same data school by school. And you'll see, you'll continue to see that in the monitoring reports as we move forward. So I just wanted to make those two points before we open it up to our trustees. So thank you. Thank you, team.
All right, thank you. You did a great job on your first time. So thank you. We're not that scary. You laughed a little too loud there, Dr. Wilson. I'm just kidding. All right. So thank you so much. So we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. So as a reminder, we have asked questions that are of a technical or tactical nature before tonight's meeting. And there were a lot of them this time. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the trustees stepping up and asking those questions. People can find those on the agenda materials. You'll find these at www.austinisd.org/board/meetings. You can also just do what I always do, which is Google AISD Board Docs. So our questions during the meeting will be of a strategic nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. So, and I know our LSG, our wonderful LSG coach, Ashley Paz, is actually watching us tonight. Hi, Ashley. And she's been really so helpful. This week, I actually sent her my questions beforehand and appreciated the coaching that she gave me on asking questions. But I do want to remind trustees that in your packets, we each have this little folder, and it has just samples of types of questions that we can ask that demonstrate ineffective monitoring versus highly effective monitoring. So feel free to refer to that as we go through our questions. So would anybody like to kick us off with questions? Yes, please, Dr. Foster.
So I understand that we'll be tweaking the monitoring report and all that, but I really enjoyed it. And I enjoyed reading about Crockett and Navarro in particular and the takeaways, both from a learning standpoint, but also from a celebratory standpoint. Like, we've been watching these things and I really like seeing them lifted up. It's kind of cool. In terms of diving into it, we've, you know, AVID's been around for a minute. And when it's like popping, like, really, really great things happen. But I'm curious about whether there's any inconsistencies in that area? And if so, sort of, you know, what can be done with that? How can we wrestle with that to, or how can we be supportive of wrestling with that to ensure that the excellence that AVID can produce is consistent?
That's a great question. So I really appreciate you talking about how AVID implementation vary across campuses. So just like any other program, we are constantly monitoring how we can improve that implementation across campuses. Crockett is working on pursuing that national demonstration status, which would be the first high school in Austin ISD to achieve that status. Right now, the only national demo school we have is Beddychuk. And part of that national demonstration status means that over 40% of their teachers have attended AVID training, and over 50% of their teachers use AVID strategies on a regular basis. So it's, it's really, they've moved AVID outside the AVID elective. And so there are various certifications that AVID campuses receive. So they can be emerging, they can be emerging school-wide. And really, it reflects how much AVID has sort of been embraced school-wide. So at the secondary level, for example, there is an AVID elective course. And so there are students that are in an AVID elective, but the strategies that are related to WICER, which is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, which are really just best practices and instruction, are leveraged and sort of celebrated. just best practices and instruction, are leveraged and sort of celebrated district, or I'm sorry, campus-wide. And the more Avid systems and structures are embedded in the campus, whether or not the campus leadership is part of the Avid site team and really help driving those decisions, really helps with the Avid implementation. Right now, we are fortunate to have an Avid coordinator and three Avid project specialists who really work to support those campuses. They do learning walks on campuses, they try to support. At the secondary level, sometimes staffing can be an issue for who the Avid teacher is, so whether or not it's a, like, okay, this person really wants to do Avid, they've gone to all the Avid training, they're going to do it, or it's, oh, we need to fill this hole, this teacher's going to do it. And so, you know, we have a lot of recommendations, and we also work to support campuses and their daily reality of how they work to do that. One of the things that we're going to start working on is Avid Center. Part of our Avid membership fee involves Avid Center coaching, so coaching from professionals with Avid Center, and how we can leverage them to better support, like, the rigor in our AP or our advanced courses, so that they're also, again, moving beyond just the Avid elective and helping ensure that more students are having access to that opportunity.
But is Avid Center, is that national?
Yes. So, we pay, we, Avid, Avid is a national organization.
Right.
We pay a licensing fee in order to be Avid campuses. So, Avid Center is the person or the group, organization that sort of creates, every campus has a coaching and certification instrument, so there's different qualifications and criteria that campuses have to meet in order to be sort of Avid certified.
Okay. That was, that was a new, there was a new piece of information there for me. That's really interesting. It sounds like something we should be taking, like, advantage of in terms of the free.
We're working on it.
The free coaching. Got it, got it, got it. That's awesome. This might have come up in the trustee questions beforehand, but to, to put a point on it and, and raise it up, I'm curious about philosophically, operationally, and let's say, consequentially for students, the drive for enrollment versus successful, versus the reality of successful completion, and, you know, what opportunities are in that, but also, are there any sort of dangers in that? Like, you spoke to the reality of kids, executive faculties being wherever, and so they jump into an on-ramps and don't handle it super well, and there might be consequences for that. So, can we talk about, or can you help flesh out the balance between the drive for enrollment versus the importance of successful completion, the consequences for not?
I'll just start, just real, real fast to start with, thinking about the Avid support. So, one of the things that is really great about Avid is that it's really trying to encourage students to take more rigorous courses while ensuring that they're getting the academic support. So, we never want to push a student into an advanced or AP or on-ramps course just because they should take an advanced course. We want to make sure that we're helping them reach their full potential, and as Dr. Wilson mentioned earlier, oftentimes, some of our historically underserved students aren't going to take those courses unless someone sees it or tells them that they should take it. But we also want to make sure that, sort of philosophically, that we are also supporting them in that class, and that's also, I think, with the collaboration with secondary counseling or academic counseling, as well as with teachers, and really working on building up some of the partnerships of, we know that there are other people and other organizations that are supporting students, so whether it's one of our college access partners or what, after-school program, really supporting all those stu, all the organizations that are working with students, because we also know students see the counselors, but they also see their teachers every day. So, how are we ensuring that the teachers also feel supported and providing that support to students?
Yeah. And I think the beauty of this goal is that there is no one way or pathway, so in essence, we're not funneling students to a certain desired pathway. If they get into an on-reps course and they feel this isn't a great fit for them, then there are other pathways that they can explore, such as the advanced placement courses, IB courses, dual-credit courses. So, I think that helps out a lot, because if there's a misconception, then they will prioritize one pathway over the other, and then they may struggle or stay in it because they think this is the only way to get to their desired outcome. In this case, it's not, but it comes with family and community engagement and a whole school, whole district approach to ensure that our counselors and everyone that has FaceTime with a student that is advising them, that they do inform them of all of their options and encourage the students to explore. If we get students started as early as, you know, middle school, that really helps out, because you don't want to get to high school, and this is your first time being in a rigorous, in an elevated course or class that is more demanding on a rigorous level. Our hope is, even through GT identification, which you'll hear about a little later with our CPM, but our hope is that the earlier we identify students, even as early as elementary school, and the earlier we expose them to these pathways, then it becomes seamless once they enter the doors for middle school and for high school.
Oh, I just turned it off instead of on. Intellectually ready for the material, but rather, you know, sort of differentially, the skill sets around the demands of, no, it's got to be submitted at this time, and there's kind, you know, there's, there's just some challenges that I, it sounds, that Avid would support, for instance, and Avid best practices would support, that it sounds like you're lifting up. But I just hate the idea of kids having a bad experience in the advanced opportunity because we haven't scaffolded or surrounded, or, you know, created the supports around them, that it's not just about the content, it's about these boring rigors, you know? And I guess the, the last thing, just really quickly, again, going back to Crockett and Navarro, and as you mentioned in the report, these are two, like, one of, they're just two of our beautifully diverse campuses, and it's a really important and valuable reality to see something that should be our gold standard, which is excellence across groups and alignment, so that what you see is student groups all performing well, and not, oh, well, all the black kids are doing well, and we've left behind the Hispanic kids, you know, or whatever. So, I'm curious about a sense of application of the best practices at a Crockett and Navarro at, say, an Eastside.
I love that you brought up Eastside.
We just had our first CCMR meeting for January at Eastside, and we had really great news, and so the two of us are pressuring her over here to answer this question.
So, one thing I'll also, just to highlight Avid, because we're on a theme here, Avid at Eastside has the largest class in Eastside history with forty-one seniors. They are also currently second in all the Avid senior classes in the percentage of students accepted to at least one college, and they're currently leading all Avid senior, all Avid four classes for TAFSA and FAFSA completion. They're doing really great college readiness things, but especially in terms of college credit, one of the things that's been really exciting this year is that they have really expanded their AP services and course offerings. So, they went from offering twenty-seven, they had one AP course last year, so they had twenty-seven AP exams last year, to a hundred and fifty-nine this year by adding in AP World History, AP US History, as well as AP English Lang. And the campus has really supported all those students in helping ensure that not only are that many students taking the courses, but they're also registered for the AP exam. So, they have a hundred percent exam registration as well at this time. Now, you may also be wondering, but they're brand-new to Avid, or they're brand-new to AP, not to Avid, but they're brand-new to AP, what supports are they receiving? So, we've been really thoughtful and intentional with Eastside. They have reached out, we have a new AP IB coordinator this year, who's been amazing. And one of the things that he's done regularly is make sure he's visiting Eastside and really making sure that new-to-AP teachers are receiving the resources, the support that they need, and even just learning about what resources are available through College Board. They've also, have also organized some AP teacher shadowing, so Eastside teachers, as well as teachers from LBJ and Travis, were also invited to go visit other AP classes. So, they visited AP classes at McCallum and Navarro on one day, and a different AP subject visited Aikens and Bowie, and we really used that opportunity to, so that new-to-AP teachers at Eastside got to see sort of experienced AP teachers, and really created sort of a day-long learning experience for those teachers, so that embedded professional learning of really how they're reviewing resources, what do they need, what other next steps they might have. So, we are really excited. So, thank you for that setup about asking about Eastside. We're really excited to continue to support them and see how we can continue to not just see growth in the program, but success in the program as well.
Oh, yeah, and so, the, the reflection in our data as it emerges. All right, so now you made me have to ask you about staffing and about, you said, here's this explosion of course opportunities on, not to single out a campus, but on one of our many campuses, where sometimes we've had permanent subs for a long, long time, or we've had other evidence of what we'll call a shortage. So, I hear training.
Yep.
But what, what's happening that's made a sea-change difference that you're able to staff what you just spoke to, or we're able to staff what we spoke to?
So, for AP, this goes back to some of the root causes and the variations of requirements. So, for advanced placement courses, there's not a specific credential or requirement in order to teach an AP course. So, it's not like dual-credit, where you have to have a certain number of dual-credit hours, or on-ramps, where you have to have attended the on-ramp-specific professional learning. So, in that sense, we do end up getting a lot of new-to-AP teachers, especially at some of those campuses, bless you. And sometimes there, those students, those new teachers are identified even like in August. So, one of the things we've worked on is that there are fall AP seminars, there are virtual AP sort of seminars, if they can't, if they haven't been able, or they weren't able to attend the week-long or four-day AP Summer Institute, really trying to connect them with other opportunities after they start. That also goes to, some campuses have a lot of change or turnover in campus staff, so, you know, it might have also been that in June, one teacher went to AP Summer Institute, and by August, that teacher is not teaching that AP course anymore. And so, it is really working with campuses, supporting them, trying to problem-solve and provide opportunities, and then kind of see what else we can do. One of the other really great things we're able to do this year is working with humanities. We did an AP Java-like, so there is one day of the year that is designated as like a Java-like professional learning, so we were able to bring in all, we invited all new or novice, I think it was like zero-to-five-year AP humanities teachers, and sort of created a district-wide PLC, because often those AP teachers might be singletons, like, they might be the only AP US History teacher. And so, really having them collaborate with other AP teachers across the district, getting into, there's a lot of great resources from College Board after students take the test, and really getting into what they call their instructional planning reports, and really seeing, okay, well, how did students do last year? What are some areas of growth, and how can I address that for this year so that students this year can do better in that area?
There's also a focus on strong school leadership. So, another trend that you'll see with these campuses as well is that the principal is very intentional, very knowledgeable about systems, curriculum and instruction, things of that nature. Eastside has a new assistant principal, and quite frankly, they have a new, entirely new administration team, but there's a strong focus and cohesive support from the executive director with coaching. So, in the summer, this past summer, the executive director for Eastside strategically coached and support for the master schedule, rebuilding it from the ground up, and being able to offer feedback. The executive director, Corey Manor, was a former high school principal of Crockett within Austin ISD. So, just able to offer streamlined support, to be able to coach these principals and coach campus leaders. Another area of focus for Eastside over the summer was just looking at the admin team and reconfiguring it, being able to take an AP position vacancy, trade it in for academy director, and have a focus on building the academies, building the support where early college work in a lot of different areas. So, a lot of the changes and shifts that you'll see in the data, a lot of that does come from the coaching, weekly coaching with the executive director and the school, the campus leadership and principal, and then also, the executive directors meet with these teams and leaders every Friday. So, we're all on one page when we go onto the campuses, and we're able to help do needs assessments, and then help to problem-solve and figure out, and it really comes with just the budget and the master schedule, being able to plan, being fiscally responsible, and being able to allocate resources, not based on adult preferences, but based on student needs. If we see that there is a gap in the data, then this is where our resources should be allocated towards, and we've noticed that when that is done responsibly and efficiently, then we are able to see incremental gains in the data. Another thing is, we are looking to focus our just-in-time training on not just, there's a lot of intentional support for new teachers, and it's needed. There's a teacher shortage, and we see that there's a, you know, high teacher attrition rate. There's also a lot of intensive focus support in PLCs and on-c campuses for striving teachers, teachers that may need help with classroom management, teachers that may need help with content delivery. What we notice as a gap in our practice is there's less intentional focus support when it comes to veteran teachers or teachers that teach higher-level courses such as AP coursework. When you walk into a just-in-time session or training, you won't see that AP teacher there. So, we've been working with our secondary academics team because we want to have a focused group of support around that as well. Many of you are former teachers, and you know that if you are a veteran teacher on the campus, or you're a pretty strong, highly-effective teacher, you are tasked with the job of mentorship, and so you get to dedicate all those extra hours before school, after school, during your planning periods to mentor, and you pour into it, and you, you, you find joy into pouring into novice teachers, but then you also deserve to be supported, and you also deserve to experience growth and development. It's the same with a high-performing campus, they ask, like, we want our executive directors on campuses, too. We restructured that whole framework two years ago, because everyone deserves a coach and everyone deserves support. So, just having a more intentional, streamlined focus on supporting all teachers, having just-in-time sessions and professional learning sessions for all teachers, and then encouraging their participation. I think AP class is a big thing, because it's assumed that if you're an AP teacher, then you are following, you know, what is provided in AP class, but we noticed that there were some gaps in that, and so when that support is provided to teachers, it invariably helps to enhance value-add for students.
I've heard so much that I love, by the way. As you talk so much, appropriately so about, now, as you talk so much, right? As you talk so much and appropriately so about the supports, and about the coaching, and about the training, and the nuance therein, what's a veteran need, what's a newbie need, et cetera, et cetera. From a trustee perspective or, or a board perspective, I'd be very excited to hear about the compensation structures and the eventual remuneration that supports a teacher in doing what is like extra, right? So, ways to have that support that, that folks are not only receiving but giving, be honored through quality of professional life, and anytime you're adding, like, what are we going to do with this? Like, what's the line of, you know, adding more to you? You're so awesome here. Like, what's the line on that? And the other side is, what are the ways to honor that? One of the ways that we think about is types of compensation, et cetera. So, I'd be very excited to hear that when the time comes in a couple months. Thank you so, so much for the work and the presentation.
Any other trustees have questions? Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I'll just do a quick plug for Reach. I don't know if anybody remembers that.
Yes.
From a while back, that was amazing, and it spoke exactly to what trustee Foster was just talking about. Thank you for this information. I had a question specifically about the data around special education students on page four. There's six-point-seven percent of students entering with prior college credit, and current data shows twenty-one-point-five percent of students enrolled in courses this year. Could you talk about your understanding of the specific challenges for this population? And I guess how the strategies that you've enumerated speak to the challenges on this particular population of students?
So, for, are you talking about for special education, the current enrolled students, that twenty-one-point-five percent? So, one of the things we have worked with our special education department, and they've also, you know, as we talk to them about what supports both within special education and the dyslexia, which is now classified under special education, is really thinking about the, when students are advocating for themselves and what their long-term goals are. So, this enrollment in college-credit courses should also reflect what the students' long-term goals are, and so really trying to then ensure that if their long-term goals are thinking about some of that college-credit opportunities, that that's talked about within their case manager, so that they're building those structures of support. There's also really great transition, special education transition team, which, you know, as they get to high school and they're transitioning, they're really trying to support them, ensuring that they have what skills and supports that they need.
You looked like you wanted to say something else, but I just didn't.
I did. I remembered that I said it earlier, but I'll reiterate it again. I think our biggest change has been just the inclusion of the special education. Um, I think our biggest change has been just the inclusion of the special education um, chairperson and case manager in our campus support meetings that Ms. Benneker and her team lead. And ensuring that um, we are not just doing things for compliance purposes um, when it comes to coding or anything like that. But that we're making individualized student needs based on what is represented, you know, within their IP. What is represented within their progress and work in the classroom. And then what the student is actually capable of doing. So we want to make individual student decisions in every conversation we have. Whether we are meeting as campus, you know, CCMR team, whether it's the counselor helping to academically advise. Whether it's the inclusion of special education teachers within the PLC. A lot of times you'll notice that maybe there are separate meetings, that they're meeting in silos as departments and not necessarily collaboratively. Um, because we are all general education teachers and we're all special education teachers. That should be the collaboration and meeting together in PLCs. So that we ensure we're all touching the same students, we're all teaching the same students. We should be learning strategies to best support. And so that's what our work within the campuses and our different departments and teams has been doing. And then also increasing our own understanding as departments and teams with professional development on what that looks like. So that we're better able to coach and support and identify needs when we walk into classrooms.
Thank you. That's huge. I mean, I, as a, thinking back on my own experience, just the challenges in master scheduling coordination with having special education teachers present in the PLC is huge. So I hope that that happens together with the master schedule efficiency, budget reduction strategy. Thank you for that. Another question I had was on, on page seven, you mentioned specifically about the cybersecurity pathway at Northeast Early College High School. Um, and I, I was just kind of thinking about the questions that trustee Foster raised earlier about scalability. When there are unique programs on campuses like the cybersecurity pathway at Northeast. Um, and so I was just wondering if you could speak to um, sustainability, scalability of a program like that. Um, in mirroring that success at other campuses.
Right. Uh, I know we want to give our students every option and choice that we can. And so right now, uh, part of that is that we allow students to go from one campus to another for a program. Uh, the, the great thing that we've got going on at Northeast for the cybersecurity is that we've got an excellent teacher there who's really spearheading that program. Um, and so as that program grows, they start expanding and they have more students excited about that. Within CTE and P-Tech, Early College, those, those programs can um, be really exciting. But uh, we want to make sure that we um, keep them at a, a, uh, we keep them at a place where it is sustainable at each campus. So the more we spread that program out, um, the, the more difficulty it becomes to sustain. I don't, so for example, uh, health science. Health science is a great program. Clearly, we have health science needs across the community. Uh, but that program is a very costly uh, program to run. And um, we may have students collectively across three campuses who could make up the students needed to run that program. So for example, right now, uh, we have at LBJ, we have our FIRE Academy and EMT program. Students come from other schools to do that program. Am I answering, am I, okay. So when we look at those programs, we've got to look at how many students it, it also takes. Talking about your efficiency and master scheduling, how many students it takes to also sustain the program? So um, we do, we are being responsive in our industry partnerships and our programs with Austin Community College to industry needs. You know, what are the big needs within the industry? What are our high-wage, high-growth industries that we want to focus on as we build new programs and, and support programs financially?
Yeah, and um, I, I think it's been a great, did a great job responding to the question. One thing I would add, and this is a, you know, something I've observed over the last two years uh, in this role is that, you know, Austin ISD i- in years past has engaged in partnerships with private sector to actually build out some of these programs. Right? You can talk about, you know, ABOR at uh, Akins. I mean, there, I mean, each one of these, many of these require kind of that private sector partner or some other partner to actually do it in a way that um, would mean true sust- sustained success for our, our students. And so when you think about the partners required, as you scale, you have to have that complement of partners to help you scale. And so as we move forward and talk about long-term growth tied to initiatives, it's really going to come down to, you know, our ability to engage um, those maybe tied to the Chamber, tied to Opportunity Austin, to actually create a sustained partnership. Because a lot of times, you know, they are providing resources into the program, they're providing mentorship, they're providing in some cases, capital expenses to improve a space, right? We've seen that occur as well. Um, so everything she said was absolutely correct, but I also want to acknowledge that there's this other piece out there um, that is really tied to our partnership um, in the community uh, that, that has to be leveraged if you're going to actually scale. Um, and that's also a barrier that I've observed. And sometimes you have an agreement for two or three years, you execute the agreement of fidelity, and then all of a sudden the partner maybe doesn't uh, fulfill their end of it. And then you have students stranded in a pathway. Uh, and that's also an area of concern. So we really want sustained partnerships. And so if we're going to scale, it's gotta be a partner that can actually handle that scalability as well.
Thank you. That seems like such a um, a really significant sweet spot to determine the program that's most aligned with the interest in that community and the partner in codifying the academic vision and ensuring that these vertical pathways are much, much stronger. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Alright, I'm just gonna go down the line now. So um, trustee Cotton, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you for the detailed report and I appreciate the new format and the way that it's presented. Um, I have a question about the data on emergent bilingual students on the, the initial chart. Um, you did speak a lot about the current levels of college credit and the students currently enrolled and the positive growth in that second part. Um, the outliers, you highlighted the role that um, in particular, how dual language has supported the students' access to college credit at the, at those two outlier campuses. Um, my question is if you've, what's working or what's not working? When you look across our emergent bilingual students comparing like students who are long-term students, who've been here, engaged in English and Spanish um, from early grades versus the large population of newcomers. Um, students who've recently arrived. And I also recognize that you do talk, there's a lot of great details in here where you talk about the fact that Navarro High School has a large number of students who are um, recent arrivals to the country who are also being served through this. But just more generally across, have we learned what's working and what's not working in terms of the, those two distinct groups of emergent bilingual students? In terms of the past performance? And it's okay if this is an answer that comes later, after you've consulted with another team, but if you have an answer now, that'd be great.
Yes, so I'll start it off and then um, I'll let Dr. Severance answer as well. So when we look at what's working, um, we had a conversation around our Fab Six Schools. I know that's a question that came up about supports forum. And out of the Fab Six Schools, five of those six schools are middle schools. Those middle schools are Bettech, Dobie, Salamines, Burnett and Webb. We know that those are band one schools. And we know that these schools are also, hasn't been formally presented yet, but everyone is aware about, we are creating um, five initiatives to support as a district, more of a comprehensive approach. And these five middle schools are part of our Middle Schools Forward initiative that we're creating. We actually have a meeting with the five principals tomorrow and Superintendent Seguda um, to shelve out and flesh out strategies and what that looks like. Superintendent Seguda has also um, held community meetings at two of the five schools already and staff meetings. And we have the, the next three that are scheduled for later this month and early next month. But with this being said, we are creating individual comprehensive plans of support. We noticed that these five middle schools are all dual-language schools, which is why I'm bringing them up. And we have increased collaboration with our Met Department, um, oral languages and advanced academics, so that we work together as a strong community. We've um, noticed that with these schools, there is a strong community amongst the AP Spanish teachers. And we've increased communication, professional learning experiences and opportunities, and streamlined and support in ways that, that best supports them. We've also included the Met Department on our weekly campus visits that we have every Tuesday. Secondary school leadership, secondary academic, um, multilingual and our campus administration teams. We walk the camp, the classrooms, we um, have MTSS conversations around tiered support for students with a strong focus on first instruction. And then we come back to deliberate and debrief on what are our next steps. An addition that we added this year to our campus walks, which principals and campus teams are very appreciative of, is we don't just sit and come back to the library and say, okay, this is what you're gonna do next. But we go around the room and each department has to give a district commitment. And the principals are appreciative of that because it's not like all eyes on me, I'm the one that has to, you know, be able to do all this work to turn the school around. But it's, it's on all of us. So if we, you know, prioritize time to be on these visits, then we will prioritize time to support the campus with next steps. So multilingual talks about what they observe and then they say, as a commitment, these are our next steps to support the campus. Whether that's um, professional learning in PLC, whether it's increased resources and support, whether it's coming back on a different day to individually coach or model what this looks like. Um, our team provides next steps and commitments as well as everybody else that's represented. And then we follow up. We are increasing our visits and following up in two weeks. We come back and we say, hey, let's talk about what our commitments are. And if we fulfill them to the level that the principal and the admin team expected. So with that, um, being able to articulate publicly, this is what I'm gonna do and I'm gonna be held accountable to it. And then being able to see the evidence of that work in the classrooms has really helped to build our credibility and trust and partnership with the campuses um, to show that we're all in this together. We're excited to say that we're, which has a high, one of our highest numbers of students that are receiving, uh, that are being serviced and are identified as emergent bilingual. Um, they are, evidence starts showing in the top five, top three campuses uh, when it comes to math growth for MOY data. For math and both for ELA. And we've noticed other campuses um, that are part of our Fab Six Middle Schools and that number as well. Webb was also able to exit comprehensive status this year. So although they may still have a current rating, their status as far as the federal label, they've exited out due to Domain Three, which we know focuses um, highly on um, our students are receiving emerging bilingual, that are identified as emerging bilingual and been able to support in very strategic ways. So we do see the system and we do see the needle moving in very small but incremental ways. And then we're able to take that and to mirror that across other campuses through our level meetings. So every level meeting, we have in addition to what we did last school year, which is this school year, we have principal spotlight. And we spotlight uh, a campus that may be doing well, well like Webb will be spotlighted next Wednesday with data and with being able to service um, students identified as emergent bilingual. They share those best practices, principals ask questions. And then the next week or the fo- following weeks, they follow up with their executive director and they're able to implement those practices that were shared and it's better. We say it a million times and it goes over the head. Their friend that sits next to them, they call on the phone event, says it and it's implemented like right away. So we know that the more we give principals and we give peer time for collaboration and to share out the best practices that are working with the same group and same type of students that I have on my campus, the more it's able to be implemented in sustainable ways.
I'm gonna sort of try to answer your question, but one of the things I want to highlight is one of the new pilot things that we've done this year. Multilingual Advanced Academics has worked with international high school to try to pilot. Um, we know that a lot of newcomers are, that are going to international high school, they might have stronger math skills. And sometimes they might need um, more advanced placement, but they're not getting it because they just don't have the academic English language. So we've piloted um, partnering with COGAT, which is the same assessment we use for gifted and talented identification. But having some of those, the 10th graders go through a non-verbal assessment as well as the quantitative assessment when they can get the directions in their home language. And really trying to start looking through, um, we just had a conversation today. Looking through some of that data of as they go back to their home campus next year. Are there some ways that maybe we need to identify them, even if it's trying to identify them as a talent explorer? Because they're outperforming their other peers at international high school. So that when they go back to their home campus in 11th grade, they're continued to be supported and sort of nurtured to reach their full potential because they're demonstrating that even as a newcomer to the, to the country.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I have a question. Um, the, and many of my questions are already asked, so thank you all. Um, so family engagement is listed on page nine as an approach to increase students' college credit. Um, can you explain, like, how do you know that the strategy that the district has um, created for that is going to work?
Can you repeat the very beginning of that? I'm sorry.
Uh, it was on page nine, uh, the family, that family engagement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so uh, community and family engagement, I think communication is something that we're always striving to improve, right? So uh, we had a conversation earlier today about how every year, a student experiences a new grade level. And that means that their parents might be experiencing a new grade level too. So uh, while we experience the same grade level every year, um, we actually need to over-communicate every year because it's always new students and new parents at that situation. And so um, as we look at community and family engagement, we are pursuing a um, a solid framework to go across the district that's really focusing on those transition years. So specifically eighth to ninth grade. That's a big transition year for kids. And that's a really big one um, in terms of college credit and advanced coursework. So as we dive into the district initiative as well, uh, one of them is post-secondary success. Um, I'm excited to let you hear more about that over the next few weeks and months. But uh, that one, we're really focusing on making sure that our students and their families have the information to see a pipeline, see a pathway into advanced coursework. So we know that in math specifically, uh, that some of those courses, you need to get to a point in math early on. That might not be the ki- same case with every situation. So for example, history. I've got a great student who loves social studies. I want to encourage them as their counselor to say, hey, when you get into high school, why don't you try doing advanced social studies? So you're gonna go into AP, uh, I don't even know what the, human geo, okay, human geo. And then US history. And then we want to keep on that pathway. So when we start looking at things like four-year planning, when we say, hey, eighth grader, you're gonna come in and we're gonna actually establish your four-year plan. I do want to point out, some of our campuses are doing this in some ways, but we're not seeing it consistent across the district. And so we're working hard to build a framework to do that. Not only for our students and our families, but to really support our counselors, also to support our campuses. Because it helps us look into the future and forecast and say, hey, in two years, I know that I'm gonna need this many uh, health science teachers. And so that work is not only good for the campus and operations, but it's really great for the students to say, hey, I'm gonna jump into this advanced coursework pathway. And in that, they go into exceedingly rigorous courses. And so we are working collectively um, with our campuses, with uh, technology, advanced academics. Um, our counselors are a huge part of that. We've got some administrators in a group, but we're looking at how to implement that over the next few years.
Thank you. Alright, trustee Boswell?
Yes, thank you all so much for this. It's, I feel like I've, I'm super well-informed. It's really clear and engaging. And so I feel like I've learned a lot, so it's very exciting. Um, and a lot of my questions were answered by you during your presentation and asked by my colleagues. So um, I'd love to know, um, you would share that 85% of students in AP classes take the AP exams and 15% don't. Um, which means they're not eligible to achieve, they're, they're getting value obviously, but not eligible to achieve this specific goal. Um, and so what do we know about why?
Yeah, so I'd love to answer that. So one factor is cost. So um, the burden for most campuses is on the family to pay for the cost of the AP exam. However, it's not necessarily the number one reason across campuses. So we surveyed AP coordinators and some of them said the number one reason was that students don't believe that the college that they're going to be attending will accept the AP credit or will make them retake the course. So that they want to be in the AP course so they get the experience, they get exposure to the college curriculum. But they're, they're not gonna sit for the, the GPA, but they're not gonna sit for the AP exam. Um, another factor is students not feeling that they're prepared for it. And so I think also as we continue supporting teachers on how they're, um, making sure teachers feel more prepared to lead AP and teach AP, even if they're new to AP. That will also, I think, trickle down to making sure the students feel better prepared. And so that they're more likely to register for the exam would be the goal. Um, one of the other things that we're working with campuses on is that AP exams have very strict schedules. So there's, they are given nationwide. Dr. Sev does not pick the dates for these AP exams or the start times. Um, but there are certain start windows and sometimes transportation can be a barrier for students because the bus might not get them there on time or the bus gets them, but then they're missing breakfast to get to the AP. So we're working with campuses on how we can better support to make sure that's not a barrier for the AP exam. Um, and one thing I'll also add is we did ask some other neighboring districts. So like Round Rock is also about 85% participation. Um, Leander, I think they said they were about 88%. So we're, we're similar in the other areas. Um, and then, you know, just, you did mention, there is a benefit to some of these college credit courses. Even if they don't end up earning the college credit. The exposure to college-level curriculum will make them more successful when they enroll in college. Even if they didn't earn the credit while they were in high school, they will at least know, oh, I've already seen this content at least once. And now I'm better prepared once I get to college.
Makes sense. Thank you so much. Um, and Dr. Wilson, I, I have a question for you. Um, you mentioned work to be more intentional about AP and onramps and mentioned that we would talk more about it when we were asking questions. And I haven't heard anyone ask you about that. So I would love um, if you could share a little bit more about what that looks like and the impact you expect it to have on student outcomes.
Are you speaking to um, being more intentional about not, the misconception that one is better than the other?
You had said more intentional about how um, in my understanding- You had said more intentional about how, in my understanding, was just kind of how we're supporting a better understanding about it and, and supporting.
Okay.
I think she might have been alluding to some of the East Side support, one of the, like, really highlighting those campuses that are doing well. And then also the on-ramp support, that the teachers are attending professional learning institutes and really, you know, the leveraging that percent completion at each of those campuses as well.
Okay, that does help. Thanks for answering. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Quintana. Okay. Has someone else already asked your questions? Okay, thank you. Newbie, trustee de Orioste, any questions?
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up just a little bit on the special education piece. And so in the report, you identified it kind of as one of the groups most in need. And, you know, you talk about collaborating more with the sped teams on these elements. And I'm curious within, now that you've brought them to the table, which I love that you've done that, if there are any initial takeaways that you're using for looking at how you're going to further that collaboration?
I think, you know, yes, to answer your question, we do have some takeaways. And part of that is just truly understanding what some of their needs are. I think sometimes we get wrapped up in our own, so inviting them into the table and just in the conversation has helped a lot, especially in terms of CCMR. So those meetings are really focused on making sure that our students are leaving CCMR met. What I would say is, as we really look to support all students and not just special education students, is that we're seeing a need to partner with not only special education, advanced academics, but all of academics to better support our students in preparing for the college credit courses. Because TSI is going to be a big, what's the word, a big indicator, sometimes barrier for some of the students to get into those courses. And so all of our students need more academic support in that way. And so we're working really hard in collaboration with special education, but also academics to look at how we can prepare and put that TSI preparation into the class so we can start giving that intervention to better prepare them for those exams, especially in light of the new changes to the TSI assessment requirements for dual credit.
Yeah, thanks for elaborating. I didn't realize that is a kind of a yes no when I, that was elaboration was what I was looking for. With, within that group, when I look at these numbers, I'm wondering, you know, who, and I guess by who, I mean within the different eligibilities or disabilities, are we seeing patterns or disparities that wouldn't be predictable or unexpected, so to speak?
At this time, you were in.
I was gonna say, I don't think, we don't have the special education disaggregated by type of disability. If that's something that you are wanting, that would be something that we could probably follow up with you on and, and work with special education to get. But at this time, the only data we have is sort of the general identification of students receiving special education services.
Okay. Because I think that, that was going to lead to kind of my last question on, on that thread was you also mentioned in the report, the, you know, level of interventions and accommodations and things that those students are needing. And, and I was wondering, again, if, if we're seeing specific patterns or differentiation between the students that are succeeding. I notice on, if I'm reading this correctly, this is my first time going through some of these data, on, on page 10, you know, Ann Richards and Lasa have 100% participation. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. For, for the sped populations. And so I'm, I'm just curious if in our planning and looking at this, we're anticipating looking, you know, kind of like groups, because I'm sure the enrollment at the other campuses are going to be wildly different. We know sped's a huge umbrella. So, you know, how, how might we be looking at addressing some of those elements?
Yeah. The first time I'm going to say your name. So trustee de Orioste.
Yeah.
I've said it many times, first time I've said it publicly. So, so I, I think, you know, we can definitely pull that information. I think it'd be useful to help us understand kind of how the accommodations kind of align with the different levels of, of support intervention. I don't know if we'd be able to speak to it, but I think what we can do is do an analysis. I think it's great, it's a great question and provide that in a future update and then perhaps bring it back around at the next public meeting. But we can provide that to the board and to you prior to that, probably as soon as, at least next week regarding the data. And then we can talk about what we learned from that breakdown or desegregation, I would say.
Yeah. I think that's all I have then. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Whitlich Chu.
Yes, thank you. And so when we're looking at the special education aggregate data on page, I believe it's page four, sorry, I also have like a page six on, on my this data analysis. I am, you know, there, there was, there is a, a gain for that population from pre-pandemic or from, from the pandemic levels. So what accounts for, for the gain for that population? It, it's a small gain, but it, it still is one compared to some other groups.
I will say, just overall as a district, we've had increased focus with our students receiving special education services. And not just an increased focus at the campus level, but just systems-wide focus, even with ourselves, the central office completing the modules and going through trainings and require professional learning series, every principal's meeting just yesterday, sitting through trainings, going to professional learning with the principals, with campus administrators, and with the increased awareness and focus on how to better support students, even with our work with Stetson, with collaboratively working to look at master scheduling, looking at how students are served and the options that are provided and making decisions that are best for students and not just based on maybe the comfort level or convenience of what we've always done within the schedule. I think it's helped systems-wide to be able to see it. And it's a small gain, but it's a step in the right direction. And we can anticipate that we'll see even larger gains if we remain consistent because all changes will not be apparent overnight. So the work that we're doing now, it'll be evident down the road when we think about how we are working together collaboratively to support our students that are receiving special education services. And then those conversations are happening more in PLC. They're happening more with planning for implementation. And, and it's also just an increased focus on solid first instruction. I cannot emphasize that or stress that enough. The, the focus on solid tier-one instruction helps us not only support students, but it helps us to not over-identify students for testing if we see that we need to focus on strengthening the core. When we strengthen the core, then we should see other tiers of support, tier-two and tier-three decrease in the percentage and the number of students that are in, in need of support and intervention.
And trustee Whitlich Chu, I think, you know, I'm, I'm kind of honing in on the 7.1 versus 9.7, kind of that jump. And I think back about kind of, as an organization, what was going on at that time. And, you know, in the spring of really 2022 and even a little prior to that, that's when Dr. Stetson began to be engaged with the administration in doing frankly, an audit and began to also supplement that audit with professional development. And so it was really, I think, the first time as an organization, we were really intentional about how we were going to move away from previous practices in supporting students that are receiving special education services. That didn't necessarily build out until the priority 1A initiative in spring of 2023. But you can look to that time as Dr. Stetson already being brought in. And, and I think that kind of begins the, the kind of improvement and trajectory. But when I think back about what we were doing at that time, that's what comes to mind as, as perhaps one of the reasons that we saw that jump at that, at that point.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's really helpful because, you know, we don't improve accidentally very often. So, yeah, you know, that's, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have questions? Cool. Well, thank you trustees for this productive conversation. Now we must vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. So as a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we have had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and staff and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of the monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. So trustees, is there any discussion? All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Quintana to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. The motion passes unanimously by all those on the, on the dais. So thank you trustees very much and thank you staff for taking a part in this shared commitment to students and student outcomes. So our next item is a presentation and discussion on scorecard constraint one, which is 1.2, special education evaluations. So while this item is a constraint, as part of our commitment to focus on special education and agreement with TEA, this presentation will be in-person and does count towards our conversation on student outcomes. We have estimated 45 minutes for our conversation, although we don't have a time limit. So before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay. So since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Cherry Lee, Executive Director of Instructional Delivery and Inclusion, and Dr. Jennifer Baker, Executive Director of Operations Reporting Compliance and Evaluations. And as you just mentioned, this is a, a constraint. And, you know, over the last couple of months, we've adopted an approach where all constraints are developed earlier and presented via video. But because this is a special education constraint and one that aligns with the TEA agreed order, we're able to present it in this way. So it's a little bit different and has a monitoring structure report. So I want to make sure that our families at home and staff following along kind of understood that, that kind of, that nuance. And so this is constraint progress measure 1.2, special education evaluations. The constraint is the superintendent shall not allow campus practices that exclude disproportionately impact or fail to support historically underserved student groups. And the constraint progress measure 1.2, which is included in the scorecard approved June 20th, 2024, states that the number of pending evaluations will be less than the set goal for summer, fall and spring at zero evaluations exceeding the required evaluation timeline by December of 2025. And so in form with the new template, we are aligning this constraint progress measure with our special education initiative, which back from when we first came together in spring of 2023, special education initiative is and will continue to be priority 1A. And so as we move to the executive summary, I do want to reinforce that in the spring of 2023, as we were working through the investigation that was completed by TEA, we as an organization, we're developing a comprehensive initiative to address multiple issues within the special education division and, and really the lack of support and supporting our students that are receiving special education. And so later on in the, in that year, we agreed to an order with the Texas Education Agency. And in that order, we identified multiple things that needed to, to occur. Many of them are compliance-driven, but certainly for us, that is the, the floor. Supporting our students and recognizing that all of our students are general education students first and truly embracing an inclusive culture was, was really the foundation for, for all of this work. And so as it pertains to the, the constraint itself, one of the things that we acknowledged early on was that there was a significant lack of investment and resources when it comes to the evaluators that we had within AUS and ISD. At one point in 2023, we had 22 or 24, I forget the number, of combined LSSPs and diagnosticians, the 22. And shortly before that, we communicated to the board that we actually had over 70 positions identified. So you can imagine with those vacancies, we were unable to provide the support needed to be in compliance, but more importantly, to support our students in the way that they needed to be supported. So we were, we were bold. We made some adjustments early on. We modified compensation. We were proactive in developing a culture that ultimately invited back the, the folks that have really been the foundation of us moving this work over the last year and a half. And so at this point, we have over 70 LSSPs and diagnosticians onsite and, and working. We, SLPs have been supported. There's just a lot that's gone into this. And I think what we've been able to, to demonstrate with those investments is movement in a positive way as it pertains to this constraint progress measure. So one of the things that I, I'd like to point out is that AIS continues to be on track with zero out-of-time line initial evaluations since August of 2024. But I also want to acknowledge that, you know, it's, it's a constant dynamic number. Reevaluations, which occur up to three years and, and the initial evaluations are constantly being brought into the system. And we are using the resources we have to match the evaluation need with the student need. And also we have to recognize that over the last year and a half, just given the backlog that we had, we had to rely on different contractors and vendors. And so we have had a significant improvement, but it has been resource-consuming. And so as we move forward, one of the things that we're going to be endeavoring to do is to create a stable system within AUS and ISD where we have the resources, you know, in AUS and ISD to support the, the evaluation needs of all of our students, both through reevals and initial evaluations, and reduce our reliance on contractors and vendors. And that work will, will continue on. It is part of the work that's been previously presented as part of a reduction in cost. But I am proud of the work the team has been able to do and would like to hand it over now to Dr. Baker to take us through the data analysis and data tables.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Segura, and good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm going to take you, please forgive me for whatever I do with this clicker mouse thing. It's terrifying. It's okay. It's good. Everyone can see? Okay. So I'm going to take you through the data analysis portion of this presentation. As mentioned, constraint progress mon, measure 1.2 looks at the number of pending evaluations being less than a set target goal and at zero evaluations exceeding the required evaluation timelines by December 2025. That's a complex sentence and I would like to break it down a little bit further. So essentially what we're measuring and what we want to see is a reduction to zero out-of-time line evaluations, both initial evaluations within that 45 school day timeline and reevaluations, which are compliant when completed on or before a student's three-year triennial, triennial anniversary. So within this table, you will see four school years depicted. The targets that were previously set and agreed upon for this constraint are on that top row. However, it's important to note, we will always have a set number of pending evaluations as they come in from parents, the community and campus year-round, 365 days a year. We cannot restrict evaluation requests from coming in. Thus, we will always have a pending number based on our current student need. The purpose for here, which I believe the constraint was written, is for zero out-of-time line evaluations. So again, we must get into full compliance, which means no student evaluations will be delayed. The next row represents total pending evaluations at the time it was collected at the end of the year. This is not accumulation of all evaluation requests within a given year. However, I will show you that in that present, in this presentation on graph four. The numbers here are the total pending at the snapshot date that the data were collected. The last row represents the pending evaluations that have exceeded the required evaluation timeline at the end of the snapshot date. Again, this is not accumulation of past due evaluations. But this is the heart of what the constraint is aiming to reduce, the number of the students who we have failed to evaluate within the state and federal timelines. As you can see, there have been a massive reduction of out-of-time line evaluations from 2022 to 23, 23 to 24, to the current 24, 25 school year as of December 20th, 2024. For a high-level summary, we are on track to meet the constraint progress measure with zero out-of-time evaluations by 2025 of December. And we know that because we've had zero out-of-time initials since August and we are maintaining compliance. As of this report date, 51 evaluations were out-of-time line, were all reevaluations, which remains a priority that we're actively working on. So let's take a look deeper at the graphs. I think some of the text might be a little bit mixed up, but I think you can get the gist of it. The first graph shows longitudinal data of our initial evaluations from January 2023 to December 20th, 2024. On the left-hand side vertically on the Y-axis, you will see the number of pending initial evaluations. As you move to the horizontal axis, you will be able to see in what month and year those evaluations were pending. As you move to the horizontal axis, you will be able to see in what month and year those evaluations were pending. The graph starts in January 2023, which is when we started this initiative and allows us to track evaluation progress over time. As noted in the key above at the very top there, the yellow trend line is our total pending initial evaluations. The blue is our within timeline initial evaluations. And the black is our past due initial evaluations. We want to draw your attention to the critical deficit mark in April 2023, where the yellow total pending and the blue within timeline are significantly apart. This is around the same time, as President Segura mentioned, we had twenty-two educational diagnosticians and school psychologists. And we need to be strategic about how we are going to quickly get into compliance within evaluation timelines. Consequently, you as our supportive school board and Superintendent Segura secured a twenty percent salary increase and approved an incentive program to increase productivity for all evaluation staff. From May 2023 and into the summer, the evaluation leadership team actively interviewed, hired, and then we started the year with seventy-four evaluators. We then added four more throughout the year for a total of seventy-eight. This is where the substantial gaps were closed between the yellow total pending line and the blue in timeline line. Additionally, there was an immediate decline in the black past due line. Between May 2023 and October 2023, you see the most drastic decline in out-of-time line evaluations from seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine to two. These outputs are a direct result of the support the board put in place for our department to attract and hire highly qualified staff. By June of 2024, our system was able to cover the inflow and have zero out-of-time line initial evaluations. This was a very exciting time in our department. We did have a slight setback in July of 2024 with two out-of-time line initial evaluations. For both of these situations, our evaluation, early childhood, speech teams, we quickly debriefed, put structures in place, and ensured this does not happen again. Both students so that you know we'll provide compensatory services for the delay in evaluation. Since August 2024, we were and have been a hundred percent compliant with initial evaluations. It's a major win and the team looks forward to seeing it and celebrating every month that we provide this data to them. And I apologize for the arrows and fun things that our team put in place that you cannot see. I'm not sure why they're not loading on this presentation, but they are on board docs and you can see effectively there as well. Okay, so this is graph two. This is our total pending reevaluations, which again provides the longitudinal data of our reevaluations. The graphical conventions are the same here with pending number of reevaluations on the Y-axis and the month and year the data were collected on the X-axis. On this graph, you can see over time, from January 2023 to December 2024, the yellow total pending reevaluation line and the blue within timeline reevaluation line gap is decreasing. In fact, in December 2024, you can see that we are nearing that system sustainability. In January of 2023, at the beginning of that graph, we had nine-hundred-and-forty past due reevaluations. At the other end of the spectrum, in December 2024, last month, we are down to fifty-one past due reevaluations. That's approximately a ninety-five percent reduction. It's important to note with reevaluations that all students already receiving special education services must at minimum have a review of existing evaluation data every three years. Some reviews may require informal data to determine continued eligibility, while others necessitate a formal testing. In these cases, evaluation must both be requested and completed within that or prior to that student's three-year triennial date. While monitoring and addressing any delayed reads, the district has identified that some students exceeded their three-year reevaluation window prior to considering if additional testing was needed. So in those cases, the district is already at a timeline before the read meeting is even held. To keep this from occurring, the department continues to work with campus principals, executive directors and school leadership, and special education case managers to provide consistent data through a visual data dashboard. This allows all of us in real time to anticipate and track the upcoming three-year reevaluation dates, preemptively scheduling meetings with adequate timing to review and complete assessment should it be warranted. We will now go on to graph three. Sorry, the heading looks like it's cut off on this computer. So graph three is that represents the longitudinal data of all pending evaluations combined together. So the previous two graphs, all the data in one. This graph really provides a global picture of how we're doing with all initial and reevaluations together. It combines, again, as said, the previous two graphs, but it were disaggregated by type of evaluation. The number of pending evaluations are listed there on the left-hand Y-axis and the month and year are listed on the X-axis at the bottom of the graph. As also seen in the previous two graphs, the gap between the yellow total pending line and the blue in timeline evaluation line is decreasing over time and we're nearing that system sustainability. We want these two lines to merge for all evaluations. This means the inflow matches the outflow. I tell our team that we won't be there yet until this graph shows and sustains a green dot in every line and every dot, because yellow plus blue. Yes, Dr. Lee, you're following your fancy attention. Yes, sorry, a little humor there. You have to wonder why those two colors were particularly chosen. So we would like them to, again, be on the same line. Our total inflow is matched by the output that we're able to produce. Now, if you look at the fifty-one out-of-time line evaluations on the bottom right-hand side of the graph for December 2024, we know that from this data contained in graph two, those were the out-of-time line reevaluations. Please note, the fifty-one evaluations represented here as December 2024 are not necessarily the same evaluations that you see in previous months. The inflow for reevaluation requests continue to be substantial month over month and the team works to sustain capacity for meeting new requests with addressing and mitigating backlog growth. To complete all evaluations within a timely and efficient manner, we offer families the opportunity to come get their students tested during the fall, winter, and spring breaks, as well as during the summer. Year-round, we test on weekends and extend weekday hours to ensure we are meeting state and federal timelines. Our department has supplemented support for existing staff heavily with contractors as previously mentioned, specifically for school psychologists, educational diagnosticians, and speech-language pathologists to fulfill timely evaluation and reevaluation efforts when our current allocations are not enough to cover the evaluation need. An examination of appropriate ratios and models for permanent evaluation staff is underway to increase capacity to meet evaluation demand while relying less on contracted personnel for support. The significant progress has and continues to be made on evaluations will have a direct impact on the amount of reevaluations that become due within the next three years. Knowing this, we are working to forecast how many projected reevaluations will be in due in 2025, 26, 27, 27 to 28, to balance those staffing and assignments to meet student needs. So lastly, we're going to go to graph four. Again, the heading is cut off, I apologize. This graph shows all evaluation requests in the presentation of a bar graph. So, initials and reevaluation requests are presented here with the past three years by month. On the vertical Y-axis of this bar graph, you will find the number of referrals. On the horizontal X-axis, you will find the month and year that the referrals were requested. Each year is represented by a different color. Twenty-twenty-two is light blue, occurring first from the left to right. Twenty-twenty-three is dark blue and twenty-twenty-four is red. Unfortunately, there is no fun color theory to implement on this graph for you. I apologize. The table underneath the graph also provides a yearly comparison of total evaluation requests for 2022, 2023, and 2024, each January to December of that year. I want to draw your attention to the red October 2024 bar on the bar graph. This month, the district had more evaluation referrals than any month in the past three years. It's kind of a wow moment for us. We, overall, the district's seen a thirty-three percent increase in the number of evaluation requests from 2022 to 2024, with an average increase of nine-hundred evaluations requested each year over the prior year. So based on the total referrals from twenty-two to twenty-four, eighty-two percent of that increase is from reevaluations alone. An increase was expected as students were tested in 2021. We expect that they're coming up due for their reevaluations. However, it wasn't expected that it would be that high when compared to our initial evaluation inflow. To dig it a little bit further, to increase to the increase of revaluations, the Director of Evaluation and I solicited feedback from our evaluators to find out why is there an increase in these evaluations. Our evaluators noted some common and frequent trends to include a new suspected disability had come, so we must test for that. Academic testing was requesting to guide IEP goals for that student, particularly during the transition years, elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. A student had the disability category of non-categorical early education, I mean, early childhood. These students need to be reassessed legally before they turn six years old. There was also additional requests for related services such as occupational therapy, adapted PE, physical therapy, counseling, where the student did not show a need for that in their initial evaluation and they needed to be reevaluated. And lastly, there were increasing behavioral needs at campuses where functional behavior assessments were needed for the safety of the students or that particular student. So those were some of the reasons as to why maybe the increase of reevaluations have occurred. Last Friday on January 10th, 2025, the district submitted their monthly evaluation report that looks at initial evaluations to the Texas Education Agency. Out of two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixteen initial referrals thus far for the school year, two-hundred-and-fifty-three students did not qualify with a disability. That means our current does-not-qualify or our G and Q rate for initial evaluations is eight-point-six-eight. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, the national does-not-qualify rate for students suspected of a disability who are not find eligible for special education service is around fifteen percent. So, what that means to us is kids are qualifying that we are evaluating. The National Center for Education Statistics does want us to keep in mind, this number varies. It's approximately fifteen percent based on, you know, state, different states, districts, specific schools might have different variable rates based on their evaluation practices, local standards, and available resources. While it does not qualify, low rate indicates that students might be receiving the services that they need. It could also suggest some other possibilities that we're going to need to explore a little bit further. This includes a possibility that campuses possibly could be over-referring, evaluators might be over-identifying students, and/or we might have inefficiencies in early intervention and universal supports in the classroom. To address this, the Special Education Department has and will continue to partner with the Office of School Leadership, Academics, and MTSS teams to improve our pre-referral intervention strategies, our MTSS systems, strengthen our differentiation and universal design for learning supports in the general education setting. We are going to use and continue to use data-driven decision-making to determine whether referral is truly necessary. And we'll do a regular review of referral and evaluation practices to ensure they're being applied equitably and appropriately. And while I've hit on a couple of the things that we've done as a department to progress the work, Dr. Lee will now take us through a more detailed list and a plan moving forward for evaluations.
Thank you. Good evening. To conclude this presentation, I want to highlight our path forward to enhance alignment and provide more streamlined referral and evaluation processes that prioritize high-quality evaluations that are conducted by highly skilled multidisciplinary evaluation teams. So first, a comprehensive review is underway to review our reliance on contracted services for multiple vendors to maintain compliance. Dr. Baker spoke of this earlier. And the committee's primary objective is to both reduce overall costs associated with contractors, but also productivity and quality reports by increasing the number of full-time evaluators that call Austin ISD home. Second, our team is also transitioning early childhood, private school, and homeschool evaluation requests from the speech and related services team over to our evaluation team. And this will increase and systematize the entire evaluation process from early childhood all the way to eighteen-plus. Next, we continue to rely on the internal tracking systems that Dr. Baker talked about that have been developed and improved over the last two years, which enable our campus special education providers, our district staff, and our campus administrators to track compliance with our state performance plan indicators, also known as SPPI, and other compliance measures. Not only do these metrics get reported, but they're really representative of the responsiveness of campus referral teams and our committees who directly engage and support families and students. These compliance dashboards enable all of us to comprehensively and effectively monitor timelines. And we're going to continue to rely on these dashboards during the transition to our new digital management system, which we'll talk about in the next presentation. We understand what is measured, is monitored, and indeed, our department has made tremendous strides, as you just heard from Dr. Baker, in shoring up compliance with evaluations so that all students are evaluated in a timely fashion. We've also enhanced professional learning opportunities for our school psychologists and our diagnosticians to include specific training on evaluating for autism and specific learning disabilities, including dyslexia. Additionally, we're examining and we continue to examine our current assessment tools and processes and to ensure that our evaluators are mindful of individual differences, right? Students' background and linguistic needs as we select those assessments. This spring, we're going to provide focused training opportunities for campus principals and assistant principals to ensure that all of our referral packets are complete and robust when our evaluators receive them to begin their evaluations. Because complete referral packets support evaluators as they triangulate classroom data, parent and teacher information, observational data, along with all of the formal evaluation that they conduct to determine disability. And when referral packets are consolidated and robust, it reduces the amount of time that evaluators spend collecting that data so that the evaluation can get done on time. Another area of focus, and Dr. Baker also mentioned this, is supporting our campus staff as they project and target reevaluation needs in advance of those triennial or three-year due dates to meet the timeline. So that's another training piece that we'll be engaging with our campus staff. And lastly, I'd like to point out, as Dr. Baker did as well, that the evaluation team works cross-functionally with members of our IT team, our teaching, learning, and leading departments, including MTSS, and even teams within our own team, right? Like our campus support, our speech pathologists, our Section 504 teams, to ensure cohesive and integrated systems from the referral process all the way through special education service implementation. And we continue to bridge existing silos. We find the silos and we bridge the silos to work together to stay on track, because this is a whole district effort. It's a continuous process of monitoring timelines, supporting campuses, hiring and onboarding qualified evaluators in the providing and professional learning, and parent and family outreach with Childfine. So this concludes our first presentation for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. And so, who would like to kick us off with questions? Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you both. I had a question about one of the strategies that you all listed. On page seven, you talked about enhanced collaboration with families and also the introduction and the development of a parent and a family guide. I was wondering if you've gotten feedback from families on that parent-family guide and how that might be built upon or improved as a successful strategy for this GPM?
I think that's an excellent suggestion. And actually, Dr. Lee and I are planning for our new CFAC meeting coming up this month. And I think that would be a great suggestion too to bring to them. We haven't particularly received any feedback. We would love feedback. I'm not sure, maybe we could set up like a Google form or something too to send to the public so that they could provide feedback in an easier way, maybe than just emailing us. But we will definitely look into that. But yes, we are actually very excited to create that family manual. So getting feedback and changing it and revising it to whatever meets their needs would be extremely helpful. And we also provide virtual presentations on Childfine, which is really the requirement that we identify, locate, and serve children with disabilities in our school district. So we engage with not only our community, but also our private school communities as well and share that information with students and families that are attending private school.
Thank you for that. I haven't been able to make it to a CFAC meeting, but I look forward to it. So, thank you both. I had one other question. You also talked about on page seven, weekend and holiday testing as a strategy in order to meet the demand of the evaluations and the reevaluations. I assume kind of as our budgetary concerns increase and we talk about reducing contractual expenses, what do you think is the long-term plan to reduce the need to do weekend and holiday testing?
I think we mentioned that possibly looking at a more employment model. And we've already engaged with Dr. Stetson to kind of look in that work. We've met with talent strategy, we've met with finance department. So we're doing those conversations as part of that steering committee to look how to reduce those contracted services. Because a majority of our weekend and holiday testing is contractors that are able to provide and help us with that service. I will say that it would be great to not have to do that because also, even having contractors, we have to have staff there too to run it, to kind of organize everyone. to run it, to kind of organize everyone. And so the staff does get a little bit tired.
And Dr. Baker, I think one of the things that maybe would help illuminate some of the challenges we have. When we've, in 2023 to 2024, spring 2024, as we built many of these out, I remember multiple times during breaks, we would have four going, I think one at Richards, we had one at Rosedale, we had one at Brook. And what we found over time is that the scheduling kind of began to wane a little bit. Like it wasn't as heavily loaded early on in the effort. And so we are seeing a reduction in accessing of those different kind of, you know, weekends and break offerings and supports, which, you know, one of the things that we know anecdotally, that means that families are probably getting served at their home campus or through a traditional process, which is what we want. So the hope, I think that we were kind of converging to a point where we can actually provide a sustained support system and evaluation support. So it's all kind of coming together. But I did want to acknowledge that based on what I've seen, there has been less and less reliance and in some cases, just not the same need that there was a year and a half ago or two years ago.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing. I had the privilege to go to Galindo this week to see the unveiling of the new audiology booth. And that was just a really special time, I know, for Superintendent Segura as well. And so I just thank you for that invitation. It's also really exciting and promising about what that's going to mean for our students in the district. So.
Thank you so much. I'm actually going to be sharing more information about that in the next presentation. So you may get a little shout-out for being there.
You've got to wait for it.
Yeah.
Any other trustees have questions? On the side. Trustee De Urioste. It's going to take me a while to get that. I love the name, but.
Thanks. I had a question in regards to staffing and your projections for getting off of contracted. How are you considering addressing the difference between the workloads for, say, like an LSSP or a diagnostician that's just doing diagnostician and like the related service providers that are also being tasked with service delivery in addition to the evaluations?
I think that's a great question. And we're actually looking at reduction of contracted staff for both disciplines, right? So our evaluation staff, our related service staff, as well as our speech-language pathologist. We rely heavily on contracted services to support speech-language pathology. And we've seen tremendous increases over the last four years of the number of evaluations, but also the services being provided.
Trustee De Urioste, one of the things that we're not quite ready to implement is the, or some of the recommendations that we've begun to receive in draft form from Dr. Stetson as part of her work to reduce our reliance on our contracting partners. And so I think some of the details that I think you're seeking aren't quite ready to be implemented because we're still kind of receiving that. I think we just received, I know I received a draft, I'm not even sure that that's been shared widely regarding some of the initial recommendations. And the other thing I want to note is it's going to take a little bit of time to reduce our reliance while we staff up. And there's going to be a point where we're actually going to incur cost, right? And so one of the things we're looking at is our 199 kind of ramping up to accommodate the need and the structure to support the, this, kind of the new structure and then kind of a lagging reduction in those costs. So it's something that we're really mindful of. And when we have those details, we'll share them, but we don't have them quite yet in I think the way that you're seeking. But as soon as I do, I will share them with the board.
Thanks. That helps a lot. I might stop there then because I think, I'm appreciating the work that you're describing and the fact that you're looking at those elements. So I think that bears a little patience to see how they bear out. Thanks.
Yes, Trustee Quintana.
Thank you. What types of support do the 8.8% of students who do not qualify receive?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So students that do not qualify doesn't mean that they might not benefit from additional intervention or support. So one thing that we've been actually working with our evaluation team on is the importance of those recommendations. Because students aren't, right, students are going to qualify and they're not going to qualify. Either way, there should be recommendations that are aligned to the student's needs based on what that assessment data showed, right? So some of those recommendations could be accommodations to support the students' learning, some type of tiered reading, or math intervention, or other behavior supports. It could be a consideration for Section 504 Services, which is another program that supports students with disabilities that we offer here in public schools.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, Secretary Boswell.
I want to just celebrate also that sustained zero on that chart. Just thank you. Congratulations. It means so much for our students, for our district. So we, I just really want to make sure we pause to take that in. So thank you for that. And I have a question related to that is, do you believe you have the systems and the resources in place to ensure that we can continue to meet that in a sustained way and sustainable way, both?
Yeah, great question. And we got your questions ahead of time, too. So thank you.
Thank you for all of your answers.
Oh, yes. Yes, we stayed late Friday. We're like, we have to get these back. Yes, I think to Superintendent Segura's answer, we really want to look at the comprehensive role of our evaluation staff. Specifically, I think y'all also know that Dr. Lee, by training, is an educational diagnostician. I'm a school psychologist and a behavior analyst. We both know what the roles are like and we know what they can be. And we really want our evaluation staff to do more than just evaluation and be called more than just an evaluation staff member, right? So to be able, to be on those MTSS teams, to be able to help families and make sure that kids are making growth in the community as well. Different things other than just testing. And that's a very, that's the role that they have here because that was our priority and that was what we were tasked ahead of us. But even with the staff that we do have, that's what they can do. And so they have a very one-track role here. So we would love to see what we could possibly do about increasing some allocations and then increasing that role to include obtaining consent, to obtain being in ard meetings, to being in the manifestation determination reviews, to being on MTSS committees. Because right now, they don't do that. We have contracted staff that's able to do that. So that's why when you look at the whole picture of what it is that these professionals can do, they can do so much. And we have people that are interested. Thank you to, again, the salary increase that you provided, the Prop A that went through. Like, we are highly competitive in Austin ISD. And so we know that great, amazing, qualified candidates will come to help support us.
One thing I would say is if I were to kind of, we are, if money was no object, we would be currently sustained. So I think from a kind of pragmatic approach, I don't know that we're truly sustained until we implement the recommendations from Dr. Stetson, from our monitors. And I think at that point, we would be. But it's going to take a little bit of time before we get there. And again, unfortunately, what we're going to see is an increase in total costs for a period of time until we have those resources calling Austin ISD home. And I think at that point, we would truly be sustained. So just to kind of put a point on it.
I know it's all a big system. Thank you for that. I want to ask just a quick question about the reevaluations and that number of reevaluations that are out of timeline. I know the last time we talked, I think it was in June, we were talking about that number at 143. So we've, you know, counted almost in a third, which is exciting, or almost by two-thirds. And I also see that number bouncing up and down a little bit. And I know as people who were in the pipeline three years ago, you know, come and those numbers grow, that number will continue. So help me understand why that number is so variable? Kind of what you know about that and what you need from us to support getting to zero?
Yeah, I mean, definitely just the prioritization of what we're even talking about right now, right? And time in front of principals. So we're really appreciative of school leadership, that we do have that time in front of principals and also our assistant principals as well. Those groups are meeting in two separate meetings. But many times, it's our assistant principals that are actually running those ard meetings. They're helping those case managers look at those reevaluation timelines and really backtrack to determine when we need to sit down and, you know, review that evaluation data, determine if we need more testing, and then request that testing so that it is complete within that timeline. So from our perspective, it's really cohesion among the system and really thinking about, you know, those leaders on the campus and the teachers on the campus that need support and training so that we can meet our timelines.
Great. Thank you both.
And I think to what I said earlier about like the different requirements like that we have to reevaluate, because a reevaluation might not require formal testing. So we really try to encourage our evaluators and our campus staff, too, to really consider what happens when you do need to formal evaluate. You have to remove the kid from the instructional setting to get that testing. Is that absolutely necessary? Do we have a new disability category that we need to investigate? Do we need assessment data to drive the IEP, to drive their new goals, to see what we need to do there? Again, related services needs, those type of things, they do require an evaluation. So we're trying to see like, what is the increase? Are we just asking for testing all over the place, you know, and is it what's best for kids? And so when we ask evaluators, you know, they don't want to create more work for themselves either, too. So they're like, no, these kids need it. And so we went through the data with them to see what is going on there. And again, it's working with our campus staff to also make sure they're planning ahead of time before that three-year revale because that kid might need additional assessment needed. So to be on the forefront of that. But that's just something that we need to work on, and that's a goal for us right now.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Baker. I appreciate that. And then I have one more question for Superintendent Segura and my colleagues. Just given what's at stake with this measure, this out-of-timeline reevaluations for our students and with the agreed order, I would love to just ask if we want to consider monitoring this a little more often as we approach that December 2025 date. I think it was six months ago, seven months ago, when we looked at it. And do we want to check in again more frequently between now and December? Just, you know, even a quick check-in? Or maybe it could be in the superintendent's report, kind of, how can we just exercise our oversight role, making sure that we really are moving as you expect to be moving? So we have that confidence ahead of time?
Yeah, I think the superintendent's report is a fine way to provide a brief update, two or three slides, especially because it's very, it's very clear what we're tracking for this specific kind of data point to be compliant and meet the needs identified in the T-Agreed Order. So that's one way I think we could do it, maybe perhaps once a month.
Yeah, that would be great. And I'm confident it's going to show everything that it is showing. You know, I have no reason to doubt it. It'll just feel good to see it. So I appreciate that.
It'd be fun.
Good. Okay, thank you both.
Appreciate that suggestion, Secretary Boswell. Anybody else have questions? All right. So thank you, trustees, for this productive conversation. Now we get to vote on whether or not we will accept the monitoring report. As a point of clarity, again, we are not, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we have had a satisfactory conversation and a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Trustees, is there any discussion? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is a presentation and discussion on scorecard constraint three, 3.1 and 3.3, advanced academics and GT. And as a scorecard constraint based on the LSG requirements, this time does count actually against our student outcome minutes. But if you have questions, please do ask them. The presentation has been recorded and is available to view through the link in the agenda items. So we have scheduled 30 minutes for tonight's discussion, although we don't have to take all that whole time up. And before our discussion, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone have any evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay. Since we all agree, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura.
Thank you, President Singh and Board of Trustees. As we present this, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Susan Diaz, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Academics, Ashley Binnaker, Executive Director of Secondary Outcomes, and Dr. Elizabeth Severance, Director of Advanced Academics. We're going to be kind of alternating here. And before too long, you'll see Dr. Baker and Dr. Charlie Lee make their way back up. So we're kind of going back and forth. So as President Singh said, this is a constrained progress measure. So there was a video that was uploaded to Board Docs. And it's, I'm sure that it's been shared. So we're happy to answer any questions. But for our community and for our families, I would like to go ahead and just read the constraint. So this constrained progress measure 3.1, advanced courses, and constrained progress measure 3.3, gifted and talented. And the constraint three is focusing on underserved students. And it states, "The superintendent shall not allow practices that lead to academic disparities within specific student populations, those including African-American students, emergent bilingual students, and students receiving special education services." And the constraint progress measures approved in the June 20th approved scorecard include constrained progress measure 3.1, which is advanced courses. And it states, "The percent of ninth through 12th grade students who successfully complete an advanced academic course will increase from 76% to 86% in June of 2029." And constraint progress measure 3.3, which is gifted and talented, "The representation index of African-American students identified as gifted and talented will increase from .47 to .66 in June of 2029." And so as just a kind of a, to be consistent, I do want to also point out that this is one of those constraints that goes across multiple initiatives. And again, for our families and a community following along. Those initiatives are multi-year initiatives. We're working through them and we'll be sharing those here before too long. But early learning, the middle school years, and post-secondary success are certainly initiatives that will include work that will be responsive to the constraints. And so with that, we'll open up to the trustees to answer any questions that you may have.
So do we have any questions? And by the way, just got a note from Ashley saying that constraints are actually neutral. So just FYI, but I know that doesn't make a huge impact, but I just wanted to let you all know that. Does anybody have questions? I know, I know. Oh, did you have one? Yes, please. No, I was just going to say that there are a bunch of questions as well on Board Docs that we asked ahead of time. So it's not that we don't have questions. We've just asked them already, a lot of us. So, but Trustee Gonzalez, please.
Sure. So thank you. On, when we were discussing the first GPM earlier, it was mentioned the drop form multiple times, the universal drop form. And so I was, if you were going to, if there's been any insights gleaned from that as of yet or if it's been used or not, or, yeah.
Do you mean the universal choice sheet? So we have been using the universal choice sheet for a few years. One of the things we're working on this year is a universal drop form because right now CTE has a drop form. Dual Credit, because it's through ACC, doesn't technically have to go through the campus to drop it. So we're trying to figure out how to make sure we can monitor and support students in staying in the courses. And then advanced and AP courses sometimes have their own drop form. Be very confusing for campuses or students to make sure that they're staying on track. And so trying to bring together all the different programs sort of under the secondary outcomes umbrella to make sure that we're better able to track also where these drops are happening. So we could probably intervene if we need to, but that also campuses aren't having to do extra reporting about where students are dropping from the programs.
Okay. So you're saying that the form does not exist. You're centralizing the data of it. Okay, okay, got it. That's 100% clarifies what I was wondering about. That was my only question. Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions on this? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So thank you for this conversation and for the presentation. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept this monitoring report.
Great. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay. So trustees, is there any discussion on the item? All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee De Urioste to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Now we will move on to our information reports and updates. This item is a review of our special education strategic plan, which is part of, which is part of our agreed order and counts towards our discussion on student outcomes. which is part of our agreed order and counts towards our discussion on student outcomes and special education. We've scheduled 45 minutes for this item, although we don't have to take all that time and we can take more if we need to. So Mr. Segura, would you please introduce the next item?
I would, would love to, President Singh and Board of Trustees. And I'd like to invite back up again tonight, Dr. Cherry Lee, Executive Director of Instructional Delivery and Inclusion, and Dr. Jennifer Baker, Executive Director of Operations. And they'll be reporting, reporting compliance and evaluations to take us through the TA agreed order strategic plan. And this is a presentation form, it is not a monitoring report, so the structure is different. So Dr. Baker, please take it away.
And it's actually going to be me.
Oh, Dr. Cherry Lee.
It's Cherry Lee, we've switched places now. I'm over here this time. I'll be navigating the the computer. All right. So we've provided a timeline to date on the Strategic Plan for Special Education, its development strategies and milestones. And we're going to go ahead and dive into the presentation, but do you want to just highlight the dates? Some important dates as we work towards meeting all of the milestones and deliverables. April 30th, the Strategic Plan for Special Education was developed and provided to TEA. And it was publicly reviewed and shared on June 6th at the board meeting, which I remember, it seems like yesterday. And here we are, already in January. And then September 12th, the TEA Order on Professional Learning was provided to the board. We also provided an update on MTSS back in October 10th. And then in November 7th, we met with you again. And then on December 12th, we provided another quarterly update. So we are providing lots of information and a lot of what you're going to hear is a repeat, but some good metrics and updates will be provided. All right. So as discussed in our November board meeting presentation, the Special Education Strategic Plan is built around five key goals, as you see here. Inclusive vision through shared ownership, high-quality instruction within MTSS, fulfillment of evaluation requirements, which we just spent a good amount of time talking about, high-quality individualized education programs, and improved student outcomes and accountability. And each of these focus areas is supported by aligned strategies and actions designed to enhance services and outcomes for students with disabilities, as well as increase the capacity of our special education staff. For this evening's presentation, and given that we've provided a recent update in November, we will be highlighting milestones and information specifically around our inclusive vision, improved student outcomes, including focused and compliant digital management systems that Dr. Baker will be talking about, and high-quality IEP development and implementation. So our first goal is inclusive vision through shared ownership. And it really leads the special education plan. Last, the last time we met, Dr. Robinette talked about this as the heartbeat of our plan. And to achieve this goal, the plan outlines some key strategies that include promoting Austin ISD's commitment to serving students with disabilities through inclusive practices, developing a district-wide communication plan, and establishing a regular cadence for the superintendent to deliver messages each semester, highlighting our inclusive vision. And you're here, you're going to hear about some of those shortly. And as we've continued this work, we have seen increases in the percentage of students appropriately served in general education classrooms with related supports and accommodations. Now, over 77% of students receiving special education are served through general education, 80% or more of the instructional day. So as part of both the TEA agreed order and strategic plan, because there's a lot of overlap in those guiding documents, our Special Education Family Advisory Committee, also known as CFAC, meets three times each semester to discuss and address items that support students with disabilities. And during our fall 2024 meetings, we focused on collaboration with our parent support specialists, improvements to our external website, and recommendations for enhancements to transition services for students with disabilities. And looking ahead to the spring, our work will include developing sub, developing recommendations for the 25-26 Family Empower Hours and forming subcommittees. The Inclusion Work Group and the Transition Services for Students with Disabilities Work Group. And we're also going to be reviewing that Parent Evaluation Manual. I think that's a great idea, trustee, so please keep those ideas coming and share them with us. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 27, 2025. And meetings are open to the public and visitors are welcome, as as well as our school board members. We actually have several openings on the committee right now. And we encourage parents of children receiving special education to apply through the standard ISD application online, as well as teaching staff. So before we move to the next slide, I'd like to provide some updates around transition services for students with disabilities engagement offerings. In the fall semester, we hosted a variety of transition service events aimed at supporting students with disabilities and their families. Last semester, over 220 participants attended eight sessions, which included 18-plus program information and virtual training where we invited community and state partners to present and share resources. We also hosted an in-person transition fair with over 100 participants. Last night, as a matter of fact, our transition team hosted 21 parents and students at LBJ High School. Our guest speaker was Savannah, who serves as a Student Higher Ability Navigator in Workforce Advancement at the Texas Workforce Commission. So some of our big priorities are really partnering with these community agencies, including TWC. I'd like to extend a lot of gratitude for Austin Ed Fund for generously providing funding for these events so that we're able to serve food and refreshments to our guests. So Inclusive Schools Week provided campuses with an opportunity to implement practices that advance the goal of successfully educating all children. And this year's theme is Every Voice Matters. And it highlighted the importance of valuing and recognizing each individual's unique perspective within their school communities. To support these efforts, our special education instructional team equipped campus leaders with a comprehensive digital toolkit that included celebration activities and action planning resources. And these resources were introduced at the principal roundtable meeting on November 20th, with additional follow-up provided through Leadership Weekly Communication. And as part of our cross-departmental collaboration, we partnered with the Library and Media Services Team and the Elementary Counseling Team to enhance inclusive efforts. Our librarians curated children's books about disabilities as a powerful tool for promoting inclusion and teaching acceptance. Many of these books were actually purchased through Ed Austin grant funds as well. So, excuse me, did I say Ed Austin? I meant Austin Ed Fund, but I appreciate Ed Austin as well. Austin Ed Fund actually helped purchase those books that are now curated in our libraries. By showcasing accurate and positive representations of individuals with disabilities, we aim to help students develop greater empathy and understanding of people with different disabilities. Additionally, our counseling department shared valuable information and resources with our elementary school counselors, enabling them to provide lessons and enrichment that were aligned with the theme. So far, campuses have reported engaging in a variety of activities to celebrate inclusion, including engaging in read-alouds, school-wide announcements and assemblies, faculty meetings, student-led discussions, school newsletters, and book studies. You'll see here, pictured on the side, is Lakeisha Drink. She's our Chief of Staff during Inclusive Schools Week. And she served as a guest, as a guest reader in a second-grade classroom at Houston Elementary School. As a follow-up and to support monitoring of this action, principals were required to attest to their participation by implementing a minimum of two activities and then completing a digital attestation form. So as a part of our special ed plan, our team has been partnering with the Department of Communication and Community Engagement, or DCC, to implement a district-wide communication plan to ensure consistent and inclusive messaging across newsletters and social media channels. This also includes establishing a regular cadence for the superintendent to bring forth information related to services and supports for students with disabilities. And I'll highlight a few of these deliverables that are visually represented here. So we'll start off with Special Education Staff Appreciation Week. It was actually celebrated December 2nd through 6th, which was the same week that ran concurrently with our Inclusive Schools Week. We had the focused opportunity to celebrate our special education staff's integral role across the school district. We continue to build awareness, recognition, and acceptance of disability through social media and the appletal news by highlighting inclusive practices, as well as highlighting exemplar teachers and service providers, both general and special education staff who contribute to student success. Now featured on the screen, if you missed it on social media, are two teacher leaders, Ms. Arroya Forteza at Rosedale and Ms. Allison Devaney from Jocelyn. Ms. Devaney was highlighted through the appletal news. And Paola was highlighted through a social media post. Also highlighted on social media was Joy Poole, who's a fifth-grade veteran bilingual teacher at St. Elmo who promotes inclusive practices through establishing a culture of acceptance and peer relationships. And just this past Tuesday, at Galindo Elementary School, trustee Gonzalez and superintendent Segura celebrated with the Austin Regional Day School Program for the Deaf with the installation of the First in District Technology Audiology Booth. And this booth is going to be used to support efforts by the deaf and hard-of-hearing team to locate, identify, and support children with hearing loss from birth to 22 years old. The addition of this booth really expands our ability to serve our community. And it was a really powerful and moving opportunity for all of us to come together and celebrate this great accomplishment that took over four years and a lot of careful navigation with operations, with our grants, and with our finance department to make this happen. So if you follow AISD social media, you noticed a post yesterday with this very exciting update. And also Superintendent Segura received his own sign name from a member of the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, who is also a very proud Austin ISD student. So I don't know if you'd like to share that with us now, I'm putting you on the spot.
So people always ask, like, how do you keep going?
Yeah.
And the moment at Galindo is is one of those moments that keeps us going. And it was an incredible moment where there was a sense of community that for years had been moving across. But the principal there, Ms. Barto, has done an incredible job and created this welcoming space. And we were there showcasing, or I guess celebrating the launch or the start of the use of the audio booth and the audiologist there. And I learned a lot about the fact that we support students and children in Austin, starting really at infancy. And this is going to be a resource for the entire community. And the students there took me into the booth and shared with me their experience. And two incredible young students, they they asked me if they could give me my my sign name. And what I didn't realize, as I learned more and more, it's it's not just me signing my name initial, like, letter by letter. It's it's taking kind of a characteristic of me and tying it to something, perhaps a letter. And so these two incredible, like, just amazing, bright, young girls asked if they could do this. And then they huddled, they got together and huddled away from me. And they came back and they said, this is how, they shared with me how to do it. And they signed to me and it was him. And then they they did this a couple of times. And I'm kind of getting emotional. And and I didn't know what this was. And what it was, was the principal and staff had shared with them, kind of tried to describe my role. And they said, well, Mathias is our superintendent and he is our boss's boss's boss. And and so the, and so what this is, is is boss. And so they learned from their teacher in the, you know, how they described, they described kind of my role in relation to the principal. And and so they took that and then tied it with my name. And so it was, it was incredible. Like, it was the most amazing thing that's, it was just, I just can't say enough about it. Just an incredible, loving community. The the staff there is incredible. It took four years, so much hard work and champions that most of us have never met. Like, working in the community, been staff for AISD for quite some time, just sticking with it. And it's just, it's beautiful. I know trustee Gonzalez was there and certainly would love to share a couple of words. But what's really funny is I went home and shared with my family my new sign name, because it can only be given to you from someone in the community.
Yes.
And I went home and and I I shared with my children and they said, no one thinks you're strong. And I was like, that's not what it means. And so, and they rolled their eyes and walked off. But 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 it's just, it was just an incredible moment. And so again, but it allows us to share and champion this great work. And I know trustee Gonzalez was there celebrating. I don't know if you want to share anything as well, but.
No, I just wanted to, I'll just give a shout out to Principal Barto Romero for really like insisting that that program be cultivated and stay on that campus. And also the teacher of that program, Karen Reyes, who is also an education Austin member and an excellent, excellent educator extraordinaire. But yeah, thank you all again for the invitation, that was really heartwarming.
Yeah.
Yes, that teacher there is amazing and so inclusive. And I also want to shout out Lisa Dyer and Courtney McKenzie, they're the audiologists as well that help support. And again, this is, this provides no-cost hearing screening for our students. So this is a huge resource. We can also, you know, include other communities. We can partner with UT, you know, as well as Region 13 to help expand use of this. So yeah, really grateful for you being there. And again, we talked about that evaluation, those evaluation metrics earlier. They're big numbers, right? But each of those numbers is a student, right? And some of the students are deaf and hard of hearing and benefit greatly, greatly from the service. So thank you.
All right, trustee.
Oh, we're not quite ready.
Oh, no, it's hard to top that, for sure. I know. We get lost in the stories, I know. We'll be quick, though.
Okay, so I'm going to briefly, could you slide me over?
I'm going to briefly hit on the fifth focus area, the Strategic Plan, which is improved student outcomes and accountability. We would specifically like to highlight two actionable goals within this area that are underway. The first is the procurement and implementation of a new digital management system. School districts use digital management systems for students with disabilities for several key reasons that enhance the quality of education, ensure legal and education compliance for every student. A compliance system ensures that all IEP components are documented, up-to-date, accessible for parents, teachers, administrators, and all staff responsible for implementation. The specific authorized personnel are able to access up-to-date information about students' needs and progress. And this ensures everyone involved in the student's education is on the same page. The data management system does exactly that, data tracking. The system tracks academic progress, behavioral goals, and other key metrics, offering insights to how well a student is meeting their IEP goals. This data can be used to adjust interventions, track trends over time, and make informed recommendations about educational strategies. As equally important, the system must be able to produce custom reporting based on data tracking on specific queries that we ask for it to do. This allows school districts to quickly generate accurate and reliable reports that meet the requirements of the Texas Education Agency and use them to make database decisions at the campus and the district level. On November 7th, 2024, our district received a letter from the Commissioner of Education, Mike Morath. In this letter, he details that the district has made identifiable progress in the TA order towards meeting the priorities and deadlines set forth in Priorities 1, Priority 2, and Priority 4. This was a huge acknowledgement to the hard work and dedication that our staff has poured into ensuring timely evaluations, initial and annual IEP meetings, fortifying our instructional and intervention support system, and providing professional development and best-practice training to all educators and students with or suspected of having a disability. An area of growth for the district was identified to be Priority 3, which is to improve data management and reporting system. In this letter, Commissioner Morath provided the district an opportunity to issue the request for proposals and make updates required to resolve data reporting concern. Honorable for September 1st, 2025, the district must demonstrate that it has an accurate tracking and reporting system for students served through special education. On the next slide, I will outline the specific steps that we have taken thus far, not yet, and before moving forward to complete in the upcoming weeks and months. But before I do that, I would like to briefly mention that second goal that's listed there, which was to conduct a staffing study for critical special education personnel. We touched a little bit about that in our prior presentation. But I'll just briefly mention that our talent strategy team has already conducted staffing comparisons across the state and built compensation structures for us to successfully address student need in light of provider shortages, including evaluation, speech, and related service staff. With increased salary decisions for school psychologists and educational diagnosticians last year, and the passing of Prop A for speech and related service providers, we are competitively positioned to hire incredible candidates for these positions. However, a majority of our FTE allocations at the current juncture are filled. Working at mass capacity with terrific employees that we do have, the Special Education Department continues to rely on contracted staff to support the growing needs of our students and our campuses. As mentioned in the December 19 budget presentation by interim chief financial officer, Ms. Montgomery, a steering committee and task force has been developed to reduce that number of contracts and really look at how many staff we would potentially need. A technical advisor on this specific project is no other than our beloved Dr. Frances Stetson. Various members of the organization, including those from special education, finance, talent strategy, all have already met with Dr. Stetson. And we look forward to her staffing recommendations to fortify an employment model. So to go back again, sorry, to the visualization for the management system. This is our specific milestones that we have achieved and ones we continue to move forward towards this year. So October 2024 is when the board developed the steering committee. We have a lot of great members on that steering committee, including the SOUP's office, the IT department, the SPED department, our TA monitors also. Our TA monitors also serve on the steering committee, school leadership office, and even our PL department, our professional learning department. So we meet every Friday, and we continue to plan, plan, plan for this rollout. November 2024 is when we had listening sessions. They were conducted with campus staff, teachers, administrators, evaluators, speech and related service providers, 504 team members. We really wanted to elicit feedback from all of our staff members to see what it is that they liked about previous programs, what they previously did not like, to really make sure that we are headed in the right direction for what's best for the organization. November to December 2024, the contracts and procurement team published the request for, quote, "through bonfire" for vendors to apply to. Then in December 2024, the team selected a vendor, negotiated the contract, and finalized the contract. So we're happy to announce that we have a new partnership with Frontline, sorry, with Frontline Special Education Management System Support. This is not to be confused with Frontline Acelify that the district previously had. This is a completely different product. In January to February, the IT teams already made significant headway in this in looking how they will perform the data migration and validation for the current system and supports that we have now. In March to August, we will look at professional learning and planning out specific dates, times, and dedicating staff to do a trainer of the trainer kind of model with the vendor first, so that we can make sure that we have all of our staff members trained to be able to teach campuses. I will say this is already underway. I know we put March, but we like to be ahead of the game. So we've already started looking at that and looking at dates for next year to ensure that teachers aren't having to come in on their summertime to learn this new program. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Lee for high-quality IEPs and upcoming checkpoints for the department.
Thank you.
So our fourth goal within the strategic plan outlines the development and implementation of high-quality IEPs. And we've created a cadence for reviewing selected folders for IEP compliance, which we rolled out to principals in September. And campus IEP reviews and walkthroughs are in progress, and we're going to review those metrics on the next few slides. So to date, our campus support coordinator teams have completed almost 220 walkthroughs in general and specialized settings across the district, including today. Our teams have identified outstanding levels of compliance with the three indicators identified on the screen that are now included in general education, multilingual, and pre-K walkthrough documents. And the walkthroughs give our special education staff an opportunity to make specific recommendations to campus leadership teams, as well as, and most importantly, really listen to principals and collect feedback from them on what's going well, how can we best support their campuses to improve service delivery to students with disabilities. Some input our team has heard from campus administrators is the importance and also the challenges associated with special education teachers being able to attend those PLCs, the professional learning communities, and then those grade-level planning meetings with general education staff. And this is a noteworthy finding, because earlier I said that we have over 77% of the almost 14,000 students we serve through special education, spending 80% or more of their day in general education. So it's really critical that our special education teachers and our general education teachers have time to plan, right? For co-teaching purposes, but also to review accommodation, what's going well, and what's, you know, what needs to be improved upon. So we know that when special education and general education teachers work together, they can align goals, adapt instruction, and then monitor progress more effectively. And this joint effort really enhances academic achievement and social emotional development for all of our students. So as required in the order, we've developed and implemented a monitoring process to check IEP quality. And we've now completed almost 330 IEP reviews with campus principals. And overall, we've identified some specific areas of improvement still needed within that first bucket, which is present levels of academic achievement and functional performance statements, which are also known as PLAFs, as well as within the transition supplement for students aged 14 and up. Focused efforts are underway to ensure transition planning within ARD meetings is appropriately documented, including a review of transition assessments and the development of aligned post-secondary goals. And these efforts include a review of the transition supplements in the IEPs and focused training for case managers to support alignment, including determining appropriate and aligned courses of study, which also relates to the earlier presentation from Dr. Wilson. So I think one of the questions that you asked, trustee, was about that. And our findings from some of these IEP review checks do indicate an area of tremendous growth for our school district, right? And that includes training, but it also includes really enhancing that transition supplement so that those courses of study are aligned, right? So thank you for asking that question. And there's definitely a relationship between this work that we're finding and also our metrics. So IEP review results are shared with campus principals and staff to support long-term improvement of IEP development. And we've received positive feedback from both our campus and district leadership teams regarding the process of using a rubric to not only evaluate the IEP, but also to support the development IEP of the IEP. It's kind of like a graphic organizer for our teachers, a checklist that they use to help develop those IEPs. And actually, on Tuesday, we host department chair meetings once a month. And one of our teachers noted, our special education department chair teacher said, you know, something that's going really well is using that rubric to help improve my writing quality, right? Because drafting and writing in IEP is very technical work. It's challenging, and it really does help teachers to have this frame or this guide. So that's been something really positive that's come out of this. All right. So I talked about that specific training and coaching that needs to come from the findings and be related from the findings of our walkthroughs and audit. To support our strategic plan and alignment with the TA agreed order, we're gearing up to provide a required half-day training for special education teachers on our next Staff Development Day, which is January 29. It will be an afternoon training, and we're really going to focus on those areas where we've noted growth, right? So we're going to offer IEP development for PLAFs and goals. And we're also going to offer some specific training for our secondary teachers related to transition assessments, and then that graduation coding as well. We'll also provide a session on strategies to support students with autism. And then we'll have an in-person session for our early childhood special education teachers that'll be at Brook Elementary School. So we're really excited about that. The remainder of the sessions will be virtual, just so that we can make sure we reach all of our 900 special education teachers in the district. And teaching assistants are also welcome, and that would be directed by that campus principal. All right, so I'll go ahead and close this out. We will be seeing you again as we do provide these quarterly updates, and we'll provide continued information on those IEP reviews and campus walkthroughs. We'll talk a little bit about advancement ARDs probably the next time that we see you as we prepare students as they transition from grade to grade and from school to school. And then, of course, a big goal that we have across the strategic plan is that cross-departmental district collaboration, because that allows a unified and cohesive plan for all of us. So thank you very much, and that does conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate that so much. All right. Trustees, any questions? Comments? Okay. So I think, yes, we don't have to adopt your updates, so that's good. All right, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. It looks like you guys are doing amazing work. And that last thing you said about the cross-departmental collaboration, really appreciate that. That is something that we heard about when we did the staff listening, the two-way staff listening sessions as part of our LSG. And so it's really great to see that as well as part of our strategic plan. So thank you. All right. So this ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move into the preview of the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting on January 30. AISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. We will begin tonight, let's see, with item eight, which is the agenda preview for upcoming business and finance items. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Okay, great. Next, we have section nine, facilities. Trustees, any questions on these items? Yes, Secretary Boswell?
Since Trustee Lugo isn't here to ask about it, I would love to just hear a little bit from the superintendent or from someone else who may be here to speak about 9.3, approval of ground lease with United Way for Greater Austin regarding the use of P's Elementary School. And the agenda item has a lot of information. It talks about United Way being founded in 1924, 100 years. P's was founded in 1876. We need to name that as well. That's an amazing history, and the building is about to have kids in it. Oh, and I, yes, thank you for being here to talk about it. I didn't see you back there. Yeah.
So I'm certainly happy to speak to it. And I think it's, I think it's an elegant kind of moment, just given the fact that Trustee Lugo did kind of enter tenure on the board with this specific agenda item. And so one of the things that we talked about with this board, and I think most importantly with the advocacy of and support of Trustee Lugo, is that, you know, any change of use of P's, the site of P's, the intent was always to have it be a vibrant kind of learning site, you know? Keeping students at that site was a need and a desire that we heard time and time again as we had a series of community engagements. And so one of the things that we acknowledged is that there needed to be an investment. There wasn't the ability for us to essentially prepare the facility. And I want to acknowledge that Congressman Doggett played a significant role in allowing us to put the investment in place so that we could actually execute a partnership with United Way. And so all of these things kind of come together, and I think it's really just quite incredible that you have, you know, support from the congressman, you have United Way, a valued partner, the focus of, you know, early learning and making sure that site stays active and that we retain ownership. It's really quite a unique solution. And so here we are, asking for approval, this agenda item, to commence the partnership. And I believe we also had a caller kind of call in, David Smith, expressing his support. And it's one of those things where it's a, it's a great thing when you have collaboration across multiple entities and stakeholders to do something quite, I think, important for our community. And so that's what this is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. I just also wanted to add that we're excited about the partnership. We have a 10-year lease agreement with them, and we're ready to help with everything that they need for the start of their construction and their design for the campus and what it's going to look like for those early childhood-yeared age kids. We're excited to see it bring back life there to the P's community.
Thank you, Ms. Deanport. And just want to direct anyone who's watching or who knows someone who loves P's, the agenda item has some renderings, has some more detail about it. So exciting to see. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so, oh, yes, Trustee Hunter.
I would just like to say, as an alum of P's, I'm so excited. Some of my most fond memories were on that playground, was sixth grade back then, and there were these big giant cement tunnels. I don't know why they built them, but they were just giant cement tunnels. And we would sit in there and read The Outsiders. And so, and Tiger Beat, but it was awesome. And if you don't know what that is, you're probably too young.
I love that. All right, any other, any other fond P's memories? Okay, great. Well, all right, well, so the next section is 10, talent strategy. Trustees, any questions on these items? Okay. And then the next is section 11, other. This includes the Lone Star Governance Quarterly Evaluation, which we'll vote on to approve in two weeks. So during that time, at that meeting, we will confirm with the trustees our shared belief in community ownership of our LSG scorecard. And we're also going to ask trustees if they have committed the vision and student outcome goals to memory and know the status of each of these goals, okay? That is one of the checkboxes on the framework. And as a reminder, the board has also posted our scorecard goals and constraints in this boardroom, on the wall next to the door and near the dais. But additional commitments and requirements for the evaluation were sent by staff last week. And so today, we're just going to be asking trustees to submit their evaluation by next Thursday to Dr. Reach, is that correct? Okay. And our LSG coach, Ashley Paz, has also offered to visit with any trustee on the instrument by phone or email. Also, Ashley told me today that our two new trustees will not have to really take part in that because you weren't here for that full period. Correct, but I'll have to double check. Let me just double check with her on that one. But I'm pretty sure it's just going to be the seven of us that were here during that full period that you'll have to fill that out, okay? So trustees, are there any questions about this? Okay. All right, so this will end our regular agenda preview. We will now recess the open meeting at 9:29 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with the executive session, we will return to the open session to take a vote on the action items, including transfer appeals and voting on board officers, and to formally adjourn the meeting. So thank you all very much, and we will, we'll see you shortly. All right. Thank you. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 2 o'clock AM. So we are going to first talk about the transfer appeal. So do I have a motion on Agenda Item 14.1, the transfer appeal on behalf of AB?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Yes.
Just if anyone is watching at this point in the meeting, I just want to acknowledge the care and questioning that goes into each of these transfer appeals, and that each and every time that we address a transfer appeal, we ask about details, we learn about the situation before making our decision. I just want to be clear about that to the public.
Thank you. All right, so we will now vote, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to uphold the administration's decision. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Do I have a motion on Agenda Item 14.2, the transfer appeal on behalf of MS?
Yes, I move to postpone action until a future meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so having a motion by, oh. Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Since we are postponing action, I'd like to request of the administration, I'm sure they were already planning to notify the families that the decision is forthcoming.
Thank you. All right, so we will now vote. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to postpone the decision, all in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board members. Okay, so now we are going to consider and take appropriate action to select board officers. And so I will start. So you all know that the terms of the board officers are three years, are two years. There's three positions. There's president, vice president, and secretary. And I just want to share that it has just been such a joy and honor to serve as our board president for the last two years. And I think it, I am just, I'm so proud of us for the work that we have done in the last two years. When this board convened in December 2022, we were actually, our first meeting together, we were up even later than we are now. I think we were here till almost 4 o'clock in the morning. And we really had to make some big decisions quickly. But before we did that, we first really came together and prioritized what was going to be most important for us as a district and for us as a team of 10. And we identified four big priorities at that time. One was to make sure that we took care of our students who, you know, who were in special education or who were on a waitlist to be tested for special education. We knew that that system was completely broken and had been for some time, and we really wanted to make sure that that was getting addressed, not only for compliance sake, but because we knew that our students deserved better. The other big thing, the other big priority we identified was ensuring that our students at Mendez Middle School had a high-quality education and that we were able to turn that school around and ensure that it would, you know, the accountability was... school around and ensure that it would, you know, the accountability was, that we had good oversight of the accountability situation we were in with the state. The third priority was to fix morale and bring our teachers back. We lost a third of our teachers during COVID, and that was a really hard time for our staff, for our students, for our families, and honestly, for us as trustees as well. And so that was another big priority. And the fourth one was hiring a superintendent after having a revolving door of superintendents in this district. So there, we were on real shaky ground there, but I still remember that night how thoughtful all of us were, and we took our time to really be deliberate about what we were looking for in our, in our board leaders. And it was such an honor to come out of that conversation and be named as your president. So thank you all for putting your trust in me. And I want to thank Lynn and Kevin also for just being my partners, but I think it's time for, for, for new leadership on this board. Mom is tired. No, but I, I'm actually not so tired. I'm actually really invigorated by a lot of the opportunities ahead, and, and that's actually part of the reason why I would like to nominate my friend on this board, Lynn Boswell, to be our next board president. You have been my partner, my thought partner, for like, for the last two years and even before that, before that time. I feel like we share so many of the same values and vision for this district. I think some of the things we're going to be facing in the, in the weeks and months and years ahead, you are so uniquely suited for, and I'm just so proud of you, and I've learned so much from you, and I'm, I really hope that you'll accept the nomination because I think you'll do a fantastic job serving us. I know that we all respect you deeply, and, you know, I've seen you since your days on ACPTA when we served together. And you bring a kind of leadership that's very inclusive. You're very smart, you're savvy when it comes to the state, the legislature, working with other school districts around the state and even the country. And that's what I think is really going to help us navigate the next few years, and I'm just so proud to have been able to work with you as a board officer, and I think we did some really good work together. And we will continue to do so. So I'm actually super excited. I wasn't sure how tonight was going to end up, but I, you know, just, just so folks know, like, I couldn't be happier. And, you know, I always thought, like, if I'm not board president, it needs to be Lynn. And so I'm just so excited about that, and, and I hope that our, and I know our staff is going to be thrilled as well, and our families also, so. Anyway, so my motion is to nominate Lynn Boswell as our board president, and is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by trustee Singh and a second by trustee Quintana to nominate Lynn Boswell as board president. Is there any discussion? All right. Well, all those in favor, or did you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for your words, your nomination, your leadership. You have carried us through two years of really potentially treacherous waters and brought us out on the other side so much stronger and better than I imagined we could have been. You helped us find our superintendent and led us through that. You have led us so strategically and thoughtfully and diligently through Lone Star Governance and the agreed order with TEA, through budget ups and downs, through a bond, through the TRE, through so many things, and done it every moment with integrity and inclusivity and collaboration. And I've learned so much from walking alongside you as a leader and, and serving with you, and I just appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's appreciated. All right, well, with that, so again, having a motion by, by trustee Singh, just plain old trustee Singh, and a second by trustee Quintana for Lynn Boswell as our board president. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Good job. So excited. All right, so, and now for our next position for board vice president, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, and in the same spirit, offer just a bit of a note of thank you. So I assume we're up to the position of vice president, a position that I've held, that I've been with, with great honor and enjoyment and long hours for the last two years. I believe deeply in this board, this body, and that part of the role modeling that I think, well, president Singh is just, trustee Singh has just, what she just modeled was creating space for dynamic leadership to emerge and to share, you know, there's a commitment to shared leadership and a commitment to diversity of perspective being brought into positions of empowerment. That's not the way it's traditionally done, and that's something that we do, that we've committed to. We've committed to sharing power. That's an aspect of equity and seeing dynamic leaders have the opportunity to fully live into that leadership. I love the idea of an early childhood ed advocate being in a leadership position of a current mom of trustee, of children in the district, assuming a leadership position, a truth teller, assuming a leadership position. I'd like to nominate Catherine Whitley-Chu, trustee Whitley-Chu, to be our vice president.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have, having a nomination from, I don't know what to call you, like, vice, nope, Vice President Foster, you're still Vice President Foster, and a second by trustee Hunter to nominate Catherine Whitley-Chu as our board vice president. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I want to thank you so much for the nomination and for, to president Singh and to Vice President Foster for really believing in me, for being mentors to me, both as a trustee, and something I tell people all the time is my favorite thing about being on this board is getting to work with parents who've been there, who've been, you know, in the trenches, who've gone and have their amazing older kids doing wonderful stuff, and the joy they take in my children and their accomplishments when I'm playing recordings of them learning to read, how they say, like, both like cherish those moments and acknowledging like how hard it is. You know, lots of times, parents of young children don't have friends who are really experienced parents, who've just gotten on the other side of having, you know, adult kiddos, because we don't have the same, we're not in the same spaces. And so I just, I appreciate all, like, the space that I get to be in as a trustee. These are, we are people that represent a lot of different spaces, and if Austinites got to come together and solve problems this way, we, you know, not just as this body but as, as all of Austin, we'd be in a much better position. So I'm excited to keep, you know, thank you for holding me up as a leader, and I know you'll continue to, to teach me, and I look forward to continuing that, so thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so having a motion by Vice President Foster and a second by, was it trustee Hunter? Okay. For Catherine Whitley-Chu as our board vice president, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. I just wanted to see your kids' reaction when you tell them. Will they even have any idea what you mean?
They're not.
Yeah, okay, so now we are, we will open up for nominations for board secretary.
I'd like to nominate trustee Andrew Gonzalez to be our board secretary. He's someone who I have seen in a, you know, a future leadership role from the moment he joined our board. I really value the teacher magic and knowledge that you bring, first of all, and the relationships you have, and, and from someone, one of the few people on this board who hasn't been a teacher, one of the shrinking number of people on this board who's never been a teacher. It is truly magic when I see it in action. Your level-headedness, your, your even keel, no matter how crazy things get here, I think helps stabilize all of us when we feel those feelings sometimes when things get stressful and scary and tumultuous. You never seem to feel it. You certainly don't show it, and I think that helps us all. You're strategic. You have a beautiful network of relationships. You are human in the most powerful ways. You mean it all, and, and I am proud to nominate you to be our secretary.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so having, we have a motion from president Boswell and a second from trustee Kaufman to nominate Andrew Gonzalez as our board secretary. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say I'm deeply honored by the kind words that you just shared, Lynn. I try my best and I fail frequently, but I do love this district with all my heart, and I am honored to serve it in the way that you feel I'm fit for through the next two years, so thank you.
All right, so having a motion from president Boswell and a second by trustee Kaufman for Andrew Gonzalez as our board secretary. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Looks like we've got new board officers. All right, and it is only 2:16 AM, so I think we did pretty good. All right, so, well, I don't, you.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I think you finish this meeting.
Oh, I get to finish it? Okay, well, I mean, you know, I was going to say, well, president Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by president Boswell and a second by trustee Quintana to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. We, this meeting is adjourned at 2:17 AM. Thank you all very much.